Buenas tardes para acceder a traducción, por favor. Presionen el botón. Los que están en Zoom. Vamos a ir a sesión cerrada en este momento, por favor.
Our close session items are anticipated radiation conference for legal counsel, student with discipline, and public.
New public comment.
Okay. We will be back after our organization at six thirty P. Thank you, Sasha.
Icon below or at the John, you can go to the back of the room to get the materials. Para acceder a traducción, aprieten el botón del globe and zoom when the jump with an ear la esquina de gimnasio. We are returning from our close session. After our opening procedures, we'll have our opportunity to make a public comment. The board has changed public comment format. We have the non-dominant items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. You're playing the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on the agenda item. After turning to staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternate in public comment. Participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. An opportunity to make public comments. After the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker. To the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now, we're going to move to our opening procedures. First, we have the pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for our land acknowledgement. Recognize that we are presently on the land so that you change your black my park and alone people. As the first and half tenth of the land being occupied. We're now going to move to item B four. Item B four on today's agenda is the annual organizational meeting. Education code section one eight three three. And board by law nine one zero zero require the board to hold an annual organizational meeting to determine the precedent, the board president and clerk for the upcoming calendar year. As part of this item, the board will also appoint the board secretary. Signatures, set the schedule for regular. Instead of board calendar for the year. Board by law nine one zero zero states the board clerk will generally replace the outgoing president. Based on advice from legal counsel, the current board retains its discretion to elect any board member, president or clerk. Before we move to the actual election, we are first going to recognize our outgoing president and clerk. I'll pass it to Dr. Hurst and then we'll move forward with the election.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to share. Two amazing leaders, trustee clerk Smith Folds and President Gonzalez Hoi. As I think about leadership and leadership qualities, here's what. Over this year, but also over the past two and a half years I've been here. When they operate with integrity. And I'll just share with you. As I think about integrity, I think about those individuals who are honest, who are ethical and who have high values. Two individuals that walk truly the talk. What you see in any forum, that's what you get. Um, trustee clerk Smith Folds, we all know she's a bold, passionate leader and she equity minded and also operates through her anti-racist lens. What I'll share also about President Gonzalez Hoi, I've heard this term used by trustee clerk Smith Folds about generosity of spirit. And I will say that truly is extremely humble man, but he has extremely high expectations.
Sitters, I'm sorry to interrupt you right in the middle of talking about me, but online they are hearing the translator, not you or us. The interpreter. They're promoted. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, you continue.
And I was getting all sentimental, I was getting ready to cry, sir, so. What I was saying, just share with everyone, two amazing leaders operate with integrity. Um, you also have a bold, passionate leader and trustee clerk Smith Folds. You also have a leader who truly has this generosity of spirit, very humble person and President Gonzalez Hoi, but he has extremely high expectations and pushes the organization. I think another quality that I've seen in both of these leaders is courage. And how I define that is the ability to do something even when it feels uncomfortable. And I've seen both of them in situations have really honest, transparent and tough conversations with a number of people. And I have a lot of respect for them for being that type of leader. Uh, one of the qualities that really stand out for me for both of them is the ability to listen, but not just listening, they respond. Um, when I came here, they've been very consistent with listening sessions, they've been very consistent in reaching out to not just their base, but everyone within the district and listening with a critical ear, but also responding and then directing me as well. Uh, they both lead by example. And I want to take the opportunity to just thank them for their leadership. We do have a plaque for each of them and I'm going to start with trustee clerk Smith Folds first and her plaque reads. Presented to trustee clerk Smith Folds on behalf of the board, West Contra Costa Unified School District, Board of Education Clerk twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Can we give her a big round of applause for her service and her leadership? And then also we have a plaque with a gavel for our president. And it says, presented to President Gonzalez Hoi on behalf of the Board of Education and West Contra Costa Unified School District, President twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Let's give him a big round of applause for being an amazing president. I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Okay, board, now we're going to move to the election. We've done this twice together. We are now going to first move to the election of the president. We will start with nominations and remember we vote on nominations as they are made. As my last act as president, I will start with the first nomination and I nominate clerk Smith Folds to become president of the board. Is there a second?
Smith Folds, second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations on the floor that anyone would like to make? Okay, with no other nominations, I'll move to our vote. We'll start with trustee Cypressert.
Cypressert, yes.
Trustee Calip.
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips. And I'm a yes as well, passes unanimously. Congratulations, President Smith Folds. And now we are going to take a five-minute recess so that President Smith Folds can take over the seat and she will continue with the election for clerk. Everybody will be right back at six fifty-five. Thank you.
All right, welcome back, everyone. Thank you so very much. Next, we will elect the clerk of the board for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five uh, school calendar year. Per board by law ninety-one hundred, is there a motion and a second for nominations for the clerk for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five uh, calendar year? I would like to nominate President Gonzalez. I would like to nominate trustee Gonzalez Hoi for clerk of the board. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there another nomination? Trustee Phillips?
I would like to nominate trustee Reckler.
We can't hear you, sir.
I would like to nominate trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I do not want to do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Reckler has declined that nomination. Do we have any discussion? Uh, I invite the board to discuss the nomination for clerk for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic year. Would anyone like to say anything? I would. I would highly ask the board to vote for trustee Gonzalez Hoi. He has shown himself to be an absolute stellar leader and we need that as we go into this new year. I've learned a lot from him and I think that it is just an amazing leadership team. So again, I would ask everyone on the board to consider voting for trustee Gonzalez Hoi. I'm complete. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go straight to the vote. We're going to start with trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
And uh, myself is a yes. I am a yes. Thank you so very much. Please give a hand for our new clerk of the board, trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Thank you. All right, vote passes in favor, a unanimous uh, vote for clerk. I'll have to read this little script, so hold on. Uh, according to by law ninety-one twenty-two, the governing board shall appoint the superintendent to serve as secretary of the board. Is there a motion and a second to appoint the superintendent superintendent Hearst as the board secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Dr. Hurst to be secretary of the board.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Christian. I invite the board to discuss the appointment of for secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Phillips? We can't hear you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
Very good. Vote passes in favor of the superintendent to serve as secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year. The board president, the board clerk, the board secretary may sign documents on behalf of the district as directed by the board. Is there a motion and a second to authorize signatures for the board president, clerk and secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year? Do I have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I'll make a motion that we approve the president, the clerk and the secretary to sign on behalf of the district.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. I invite the board to discuss the signature authorizations for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
Thank you. Oh, and myself is a yes. Uh, that vote passed with unanimous unanimous vote, so thank you very much. Um, vote passes in favor of the signature authorization for the board president, clerk and board secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year. In accordance with the board by law ninety-three twenty, the board will hold regular meetings each month typically on Wednesdays. The following regular meeting dates in the twenty twenty-four have previously been adopted. Affirm the previously adopted schedule, here it is, January tenth, January twenty-fourth, February seventh, February fourteenth, March sixth, March twentieth, April tenth, April twenty-fourth, May first, May fifteenth, June twelfth and June twenty-sixth. These are additional, there are additional dates for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, including July seventeenth, August seventh, August twenty-eighth, September eleventh, September twenty-fifth, October ninth, October twenty-third, November sixth, November twentieth, December fourth, December eighteenth, January fifteenth, January twenty-ninth, February the twelfth and February the twenty-sixth, March twelfth, March twenty-sixth, April sixteenth, April thirtieth, May fourteenth, May twenty-eighth, June fourth and June twenty-fifth. Is there a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting dates for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year? Is there a motion? Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Smith Folds. I make a motion that we approve the calendars for board meetings as you stated.
Thank you. Is there a second? All second. I would like us to discuss, I invite the board to discuss the regular meeting dates for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year. Any discussion? Trustee Reckler?
I do not, I'm giving you plenty of notice. I do not think I will be here on the December fourth, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be twenty twenty-four, December fourth date. I do not think I will be in attendance. Um, the other thing I would like to mention is that I thought we were also adopting the governance calendar that was created. And that is not attached, so um. I think I might like to put another motion on the floor that on January tenth, we come back, we approve this, but on January tenth, we come back and look at that governance calendar and also fill in the blanks on a board organizational retreat and the superintendent evaluation.
So your motion on the floor is that you, on January tenth, you would like to come back with the governance calendar, the governance calendar on here as well as the to be announced dates that we have at the bottom. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second to that motion? Present or clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Smith Folds. I just want to clarify, on the agenda, it does state a few dates. Budget hearing, budget adoption. Annual organizational meeting. Oh, but it says TBD for organizational and superintendent. Okay, never mind.
Thank you.
Um, I will second her motion.
Okay, we have a motion that has been now seconded. We will start with that motion first. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll go to vote for trustee Reckler's motion first. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Uh, yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Trustee Calip?
Yes.
Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
And I'll be a yes. So that passes, we will come back January the tenth, having also the governor count governance calendar on there and dates for the board organizational retreat and dates for. That's the only one. Board organizational retreat. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, uh, superintendent Hearst, also we need to set a date for the CBOC. The annual meeting for the CBOC. Thank you so much. We've kind of already done this, but I'll go through the formality. Finally, the board will establish a board calendar for twenty twenty-four. That includes the following. We have just voted that we will come back with a date for the board organizational retreat. Budget hearing is June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Budget adoption is June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Superintendent evaluation tentative dates are July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. It's only one date, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Annual organization meeting is December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Again, we have already went through the motion and the voting process. Okay, thank you very much. That completes our, that completes our uh, changes. Our annual organizational meeting is complete. Dr. Hurst, we are now on B five roll call.
Thank you, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips?
Present.
Trustee Christian?
Present.
Trustee Calip?
Present.
Trustee Cypressert?
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hurst, do we have any report out from closed session?
Absolutely. Item A one, the closed session agenda. A majority of the board voted three to two to make a referral to the district attorney's office and the fair political practice commission. The vote was as follows. At that time, President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. That time clerk Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Reckler recused herself. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Phillips, no. The board also voted unanimously to accept the amended expulsion for case number two three two four zero one. Additionally, the board voted to appoint Rochelle Forrest as interim communications director by unanimous vote. Congratulations, ma'am. And that concludes my report, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. Before we go to public comment, I just want to say again, congratulations, Ms. Forrest. And um, my kid was online from Brown University. She is now offline because she should be in the bed because you're three hours ahead, but um, Irish, thank you for joining online. That was really awesome. All right, public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherized on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker will be two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCC USD public comment form or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak now. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Do we have public comment? We'll start with public comment in the room, please.
Our first public comment is Denaya Walton. Hi. Hi.
Okay, ma'am, you can start.
Good evening, my name is Denaya Walton. Um, I'm here to speak on a issue that I have two girls that attends El Cerrito High School where Mr. Grant is the assistant principal. Um, one of my daughters, my tenth grader now, she has been bullied since last year and we took every step we can take to get this solved until this year it turned into a physical altercation. Um, the girl that was bullying her, there was no consequences even after everything they seen. My daughter was put up for exposure and also my younger daughter who had nothing to do with it was also put up for exposure. And once they figured out whatever they said, they figured out, they took it back from her. But um, now that my daughter, they see that the district will not be expelling my daughter, but removing her for her safety, I still have one daughter that attends there. So um, once Mr. Grant realized what the outcome was to it, now he takes the initiative to pick at my other daughter. Um, she has been removed from a classroom due to a teacher that talks very bad to the kids and she just made a comment back, no threats, no nothing. And Mr. Grant removed her from the classroom. She asked for classwork and he told her he will not give her anything um, until she wrote out an apology. So basically that's what I want to um, address his retaliation against my other daughter since what he set out for my first daughter didn't go in his favor.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, the superintendent would like to have your information right now so he can reach out to you, please. Thank you. We're ready for Zoom.
Our next public comment is Cassie Carter. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, President Smith Folds and board and Dr. Hurst. Um, I'm a teacher, Jeffrey Bean at Shannon Elementary. Um, I see there's an item up for discussion tonight regarding um, uh, budget reductions. Uh, good news since we are apparently in a crisis. Um, I'm calling or I guess on Zoom tonight with you to encourage you to keep as many as possible of the cuts away from students. Um, I know how much my former students were impacted this year when they were uh, went quite a while without a teacher before they finally got one in October. And I hear from other colleagues who are in other schools in the district to uh, schools that have two or three vacancies in one school. Um, and that's sad for me because I know that those students are probably suffering as well. Um, I'm glad to see that your agenda tonight discusses cuts to uh, uh, things that don't directly impact students like contracts and lawyers and conferences and stuff. And I urge you to do whatever you can to um, uh, keep cuts away from students. Um, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know all that's involved in the jobs of people downtown, but when I hear board meetings about some administrator going to a different school district to meet with people to learn about student engagement and NAPA or whatever. And then I hear from a colleague that has three vacancies at their school in Richmond. That concerns me and I hope that every available administrator minute is being used uh, for people downtown to go to schools and help those teachers out because that sounds like a difficult situation. So I hope that you uh, do whatever you can to keep students, give students teachers. I'm worried how this will impact uh, cuts will impact students next year. Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you. Is there public comment in the room?
Our next public comment is Alamo Brown.
Like to say good day, good evening, board. Rodney Almo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. Like to say congratulations to Mr. Jamila Smith Folds, our new president of our board. Much props and kudos to you and also to Mr. Foy uh, for his positioning as the clerk for the next twenty-four, twenty-five school year. To the left of me is a young man by the name of Javon Bowes and his mother, Ms. Wainita Towns, who you all know all too well. And congratulations to her for her distinguished award that she received yesterday as well uh, from the school district. So let's give her a round of applause as well as this young man. But board, I just want to make this special announcement. This young man right here is a blue gray All-American. Uh, he's going to Dallas, Texas on behalf of Soval Softball Sunday and some other constituents within the sector of our community. And we're sponsoring him to go play in this distinguished bowl game inside Cowboy Stadium. Although he's a Cowboy fan and I'm a forty-niner fan, I kind of feel that as a conflict of interest, but nonetheless, our scholar athlete right here uh, maintains a three point three GPA. And if you all were at the Wednesday game, he was the one who scored the winning touchdown to propel El Cerrito into the division two A uh, CIF regional game against Los Gatos in which they lost unfortunately fourteen to six. However, he's going to get another time, another game to play uh, in his high school career, so we're looking forward. Ms. Towns will be accompanying him as along with myself down to Dallas, Texas, and we're going to eat real good when we get down there. So we want you board to come on down and take a picture with the young man as we celebrate his uh, great achievements throughout. we want you, Board, to come on down and take a picture with the young man as we celebrate his, uh, great achievements throughout the course of the year. Thank you. Want to say something? Yeah, say thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Board, we'll step down and take a picture with Jayvon and then we'll come back to public comment, please. Thank you. Okay, we can resume public comment. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Shawnee Vaughn. Please unmute yourself.
I wasn't expecting to be that fast. Hi, my name is Shawnee Vaughn. I am the Teamster representative for the classified staff. I just want to just speak out to the board to end cabinet to please consider other options before laying off hardworking, working classified and certificated employees. Currently, the district has four hundred vacancies in Teamsters alone. That should be, that should be more than enough to stabilize the fund without laying off middle-class, hard-working members. I also recommend that, that, that the cabinet and the board revisits the contracts that they have currently open. I was a part of the budget committee, but I think we can do more work. I think we need to have another seat at the table and figure out what can we go before cutting, um, more vacancies for more positions for those who are already spread thin in working. We have no custodians. We have no paraprofessionals. Um, the district currently just placed a freeze on hiring to do some cleanup work. Um, we still need to have that conversation and have that sit at the table. So I just highly recommend that the district really considers reviewing their plan before cutting middle-class workers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mike Parrots.
Good evening. Uh, those of you who know me know that two minutes is never enough because my stories have stories, but, uh, so I'm going to have to go back a week to say what I was going to say at the end of last week when my two minutes was up. Uh, I wanted to thank Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi for the way he has run and run the meetings and demonstrated what I consider to be a masterclass in being a school board president. I've had the opportunity for almost sixty years now to watch a lot of school boards and school board presidents and, uh, I hope that he, uh, has made the example for Smith Folds to follow and everybody else. Uh, and to Smith Folds, uh, speaking as a fellow educator, I have to say you ask the darnedest, hardest questions of anybody and I always appreciate what you ask. And I know it's a little difficult for the staff to try to answer sometimes, but, uh, I look forward to your, your presidency also. Now, shooting up to this week, I'll go to the end of what I would say so that I don't run out of time and that's that you cannot consider accepting a rebuild of Kennedy High School that does not have an exoner an extra gym. The word is troubling me now. So we could go back to auxiliary. Thank you, Mr. Booker. We can go back to when you were basketball coach. We can go back to, to a lot of people who sit in this room who, who know the situation at Kennedy. We are hamstrung. We are stuck. We cannot have wrestling. We cannot have, we cannot do with what we have. We are the only school that doesn't have the auxiliary gym. According to, uh, slide presentations, we are in the period of desired changes. We're supposed to be studying desired changes. And last week I encouraged partnerships. That's where I'll take up next time. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Zoom user. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is FJO. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, uh, Board, President Smith Folds, uh, community, Dr. Hurst, staff. Uh, my name is Francis Cortez. I am a fifth grade teacher at Ford Elementary and the community schools organizer for United Teachers of Richmond. I am here today to update the community on a great event that occurred, uh, this Monday where we had legislative and Senate budget staffers from Sacramento visit two of our community schools here in West Contra Costa. We visited Downer and Dover Elementary. I also want to thank, uh, Dr. Hurst and, uh, President Smith Folds for joining us on both these visits to really identify what's working well in West Contra Costa on some of our community schools and what are some areas of need. Um, so that's one of the bright spots that we were able to really identify two schools with distinct identities, with, uh, distinct, uh, visuals of student work where family and community engagement is present. Um, we have a real opportunity to make community schools a distinct highlight of our district. We've been recognized by one of the, one of three districts throughout the entire state by the State Transformative Assistance Center for our deep collaboration. And I also had the opportunity to sit in at one of our community school directors meeting today and really, uh, see the great work that those folks are doing in order to establish collaborative leadership at their school sites with their administrators, with their teacher leads and with their education partners at the table. I hope that we can continue to really elevate this work. We have thirty community schools in our district currently. Twenty-six are grant funded and we are going to apply for seven new schools in the third round of funding, which will bring our total to thirty-seven schools. That's way more than half of our schools. So uh, let's keep working on making community schools a key distinct feature of our district. Thank you and good evening.
Our next public comment is Zalon Harrison.
Good evening, Board. How you guys doing this evening? Oh, I'm so happy to see you, Jamila. Woo woo. I am so happy. Long waiting to see this day. I am so, so proud of you, happy that you are there and I am thankful for a lot of the work you've done in our community and this is a well-deserved appointment. I am so thankful. And I'm also bringing you back to center. When you were on, first on the board and all the board. Um, we, you, you instructed the superintendent at that point Duffy to start working and presenting you all at Afrocentric School. That has since, since Duffy left, the ball has been dropped. It did get to the committee, the, the academic committee, but it wasn't picked up. I am requesting very strongly that this board look at that where it was left off that from the last superintendent, all you board members instructed him to do and it did not get finished. And in this deficit, because it was a deficit then, I want it picked back up for our children so that Black and African-American parents can have an option with this deficit. It's not fair that we get the same old clumping with all the children when y'all have a deficit and then our kids end up with nothing again and they get lower and lower. And when you're cutting, we do not want our scale cut and I want that clear. We do not. She has helped with our APACs. She has increased our parent involvement. She's engaging to our parents like no other. Please be very considerate because I'm coming back and I'm going to be very clear that we want our children doing this budget cut to have options. So I'm working with you all. We're looking at what the work you guys already done with the Afrocentric School and let's go back to the drawing board and come up with some solutions for our children also. Thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Zoom user. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, now we'll go to agenda review and adoption. If there are no changes, we can adopt the agenda. Any changes? No, agenda is adopted. Next, we're moving to our consent calendar. Anyone need to take anything off the consent calendar? Seeing nothing? We are adopting this consent calendar as is. Thank you, Board. Next, we're moving to agenda item D, superintendent communication. Dr. Hurst, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We have three portions for our superintendent report. We're going to start off with, um, our student trustees and then they'll turn it back over to me for memoriam and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Neely Johnson for math curriculum presentation. So as we bring this up, we'll turn it over to our two student trustees.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Cypressert. I am a student trustee from Deans High School. Um, today we will be presenting you our student report of teacher's voice for quality education.
And my name is Justin Calip. I am, um, one of the student trustees as well from Middle College High.
Just to note that all of the information is directly related to the teacher's experience in our district. Our goal in this presentation is to provide a teacher's voice and everything said in this is in best interest to cultivate an experience that is beneficial for everyone and not to shed a bad light. I would like to start off with our goal for this project. Our goal stems, um, to discern and address the challenges and difficulties that are faced by high school teachers within our district. We have the desire to foster a significantly enhanced learning environment across the district. More specifically, one that increases the experiences for both students and teachers in our district. By focusing on the betterment of teacher experiences, we hope to see an improved learning environment for all.
So first, we're going to start off with the process, which discussed our thinking, execution and discovery. So first, we created a survey that included several prompts that would not be leading. And by doing so, it allowed teachers to speak their voice without having to lean towards any bias. Second, we communicated with principals to try our best to protect the confidentiality of staff. Um, to not raise any suspicion and we did this by email and would sometimes call different sites if we did not get a reply via email. Unfortunately, our efforts of emailing and calling Pinole Valley High School did not work as we've not gathered any information from them. Third, we analyzed our data and similar to communicating with admin, some of the written data is reworded to further protect staff. With some of their responses being specific, our emphasis on keeping this data all confidential led to this decision. And fourth is our general consensus of a summary of what we learned and discovered.
Okay, moving on to the data and demographic of our presentation. And, um, the next slide will include graphs of our demographic. On these graphs, it is shown that the schools that participated, which is almost every high school in the district, um, and then a graph, a bar graph of what grades each teacher taught and how long they have been affiliated with WCCUSD. As you can see, we have a wide range of, um, variety within.
Then we also asked open-ended questions and, um, the, the provided data has undergone thorough examination with the greatest priority placed on maintaining confidentiality, as repeatedly said. The responses that were obtained showed a significant level of overlap, which made it easier to group them into general categories. This classification helps readers understand the content better by identifying these recurring themes. To highlight the perceived importance of particular themes, an assessment was used to determine the percentage distribution of questions that matched each major idea. A thorough discussion of these key components was then conducted to further, to give further clarification and to offer more insights into the ideas and worries expressed by educators. So first, um, the first question we asked was what are your biggest issues regarding the school district? Um, in this, I, uh, we collected this into eleven main ideas. The first one being teacher support and recognition with an average of fifteen percent of the replies, which stated teachers feeling unsupported and underappreciated and a difficulty in getting, uh, substitutes and lack of necessary training and tools. Second was administrative inefficiency, which averaged fifteen percent, which, and this included if inefficiency, lack of systems and inconsistency in procedures, issues with communication and responsiveness from the district. Third is financial and resource challenges, which averaged twenty percent of our replies or of the responses. And this is insufficient funding for various needs, concerns about budget cuts affecting benefits and compensation and difficulty in obtaining necessary resources and facilities. Then ten percent average was pay and compensation issues, which this, which included low salaries and concerns about pay and equity, problems with payroll, including errors and delays. Fifteen percent include other responses included classroom challenges with large class sizes and the impact of ineffective teaching, lack of support and training for new teachers and behavioral issues affecting the learning environment. Then we have safety and, uh, facilities, which averaged ten percent. And this discusses the safety concerns, including lack of security and security personnel and inadequate facilities and the detory, the deterioration of services to students due to underfunding. Ten percent average is communication and decision-making with the lack of transparency, communication and accountability and decision-making processes and incompetent administrators and disconnected leadership. Five percent, um, included recruitment and hiring challenges, which was difficulty in recruiting and hiring teachers and inefficient and ineffective job posting and hiring systems. Technology and education tools averaged five percent, which included issues with technology, including delays and obtaining email addresses and problems with tech support and challenges in adapting to new educational tools. Then we have community and student issues, five percent, community violence affecting school climate and concerns about drug, drug abuse among high school students. Then finally, ten percent included overall job dissatisfaction with a shared dissatisfaction with feeling overworked, underpaid and undervalued.
The next question was asked of what changes or improvements do you believe are most urgently needed in our school district? Broken up into ten categories, they include technology and curriculum advancement, teacher recognition and valuation, student safety and equity, administrative efficiency and communication, discipline and referral systems, class size and support staff, financial funding, curriculum and professional development, communication and decision-making, and then overall teacher well-being. The examples are listed under each category. And there are more on the next slide of student and parent involvement, educational resources, security and safety, district-wide changes and strategies and teacher retention.
Then the next question we asked teachers was what do you believe are the greatest strengths of the district? Um, most of the majority included diversity and inclusion, dedicated teachers and staff. And then we move on to community and relationships, flexibility and path. And then we move on to community and relationships, flexibility and pathways, union and negotiation, student focus, resilience, and experienced teachers. And examples are listed below.
Next, we move on to ordinal questions, which is an overview of the thoughts amongst staff. These are questions that use a one to five scale and questions asked where I can effectively communicate with the district with the highest average being a three. The policies enacted by the district effectively address the concerns and challenges faced by teachers with a higher average of three. I am satisfied with the working conditions in the district, another average of three. I have the necessary resources and materials to teach my students. This is a close average of three as well. And the last question we asked was I feel respected by the district, which is a high average of two.
And these are the graphs. And then we did have some additional comments and information, but we did feel that it was um too um like it could easily be seen for who it was. However, with the questions that we do have, I would be forwarding to you guys just to see if you have any answers for all of the teachers. And then for moving on to our general consensus.
Here is a summary and what we hope to see for the future. The district faces multi-faceted challenges, including issues with teacher support, administrative efficiency, financial constraints, and classroom dynamics. To address these concerns, the district should prioritize comprehensive reforms. This includes enhancing teacher support systems, streamlining administrative processes, advocating for increased funding to improve class sizes and resources, ensuring competitive salaries, and investing in safety measures and infrastructure. Effective communication, inclusive decision making, and streamlined hiring processes are crucial. Additionally, recognizing the positive aspects such as diversity and inclusion should be reinforced. A collaborative approach involving teachers, staff, and the community is paramount to fostering a positive educational environment that addresses the diverse needs of students and teachers.
Although we acknowledge the wide range of information provided, we are aware that there might may not be significant amount of material. Nonetheless, our goal is to draw attention to these aspects that might have not gotten a lot of attention in the past. As student trustees, our main responsibility is to represent the interests of students, but we also recognize that teachers have a significant influence on how we learn. Substantial amount of time and work required for putting this putting together this report demonstrates our dedication to encourage improvements in the main ideas that have been emphasized. We hold teachers in the highest regard for their dedication as the creators of our education. Our goal is that the information provided in this report will lead to beneficial changes that will strengthen and lift the teaching community as a whole, thereby improving the overall learning experience for everyone involved.
As student trustees, we we both give thanks to everyone who and giving us this platform to speak and use our voice. Thank you. I'm Anaya Cybercert.
Thank you. I'm Tristan.
Thank you so very much. Board, we're gonna go to questions just for this part. You have three questions. If you need more, please let me know, but we're going to start out with the first round of three questions. Uh, we typically don't do comments, so let's just ask our three questions and then we can continue with the superintendent's report. Board, does anyone have questions for the student trustees' presentation? Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Sinsols. Thank you both for a really wonderful report. I'm just curious, what what are the next steps? Uh, with that we're gonna that you're planning to do with this data?
Well, um, since our reign is going towards an end after this meeting, um, we just wanted to provide as much information as possible, really highlighting um the things that might have not been said as much, like obviously um there's been constant discussion about some of the things, but we wanted to kind of put the information out there um to give teachers a voice um and if Anaya wants to add on.
I agree. Um, I think we just overall wanted to give a platform to teachers and a voice in which they can address their concerns in an anonymous way and a direct way as well.
Any other questions? I have two questions. On your survey that you sent out, did you include Greenwood, Adult Ed, and Transition?
No, we did not. So we chose um the pub, you chose the public high schools that um, of course, most people attend. Um, especially since those different sites are different than what um would be seen at normal high schools. We decided to put an emphasis on just the sites that were mentioned.
Thank you so very much. The next question is, do you think that this survey would be applicable to staff? You send it to teachers. Do you think you could send the same survey to staff and get some of the same type of information? Because it's a a really good climate survey. It's really, really good. It's very well done. So would you consider sending it to staff?
Yes, we would consider sending it to staff and yeah.
Thank you very much.
I I believe after a few tweaks to the survey and make it more um geared towards staff, I think um it will be very well fitted.
Thank you so very much. Board, any other questions? No? Thank you very much. That was absolutely wonderful. Dr. Hurst, we can move on to the second part of your superintendent report.
Thank you, ma'am. Next slide, please. We wanted to pause for memoriam. The district would like to take the time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who passed away. I regret to inform you that Ruby Stringer, retired instructional assistant in special education, recently passed away. She worked for the district for seventeen years at Crestview Middle, now known as Betty Reed Soskins Middle School. Ms. Stringer retired in twenty zero nine. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the Jones Watson family and friends during this difficult time. Can you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Next slide. This time, we're going to turn it over to our chief academics officer, Ms. Neely Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, President Mila, trustee, um, Smith Folds, now after practice. All trustees and Dr. Hurst and community, um, I am bringing forth Dr. Gabe Chilcutt. Come forward. And he has two of his um direct reports. Coordinator Mark Lobaco and math coach LaShana Foster here to talk to you about mathematics curriculum. This is a series that we will be doing for the remainder of the year. Um, talking about the curriculum that we have in the district. We also have um a presentation, but we also have curriculum here that you trustees can come and take a look at after the report. So I bring them forth now.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Uh, I'm actually here just to introduce Mark Lobaco, our math coach, and LaShana Foster, our um actually math coordinator and LaShana Foster, our math coach. Um, so without further ado, I will bring them on up to talk to you tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Chilcutt. Uh, good evening, uh, board president, trustees, Dr. Hurst, and community. Uh, my name is Mark Lobaco, uh, currently serving as the mathematics coordinator and have been a proud member of the WCC USD uh community for most of my thirty years in public education. As a teacher, uh, math coach, and the site administrator. Um, thanks for the providing us some time to talk a little bit about our work in the math world. Uh, I'll share with you some information about our current curricula, uh, both the adopted and supplementary. Uh, we'll share some current math curriculum adoption timelines, some info about graph, uh, grants and partnerships. And finally, some of our support structures for various stakeholders. Uh, on the slide, you'll see there are our current curricula as well as supplementary materials being used around the district. Each of the links provided on this slide goes to an ed reports review of that curriculum for your reference. Uh, if the slide person could, for example, click on big ideas, please. Notice it'll take you to ed reports. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see uh more information about the report overview for each of these curriculum. Uh, back to the slide, please. There we go. Thank you. Uh, so for TK five, we have my math is our current adoption. Supplemental curriculum include Eureka Math and Zern Math, both high quality curriculum inspired by Engage New York. Uh, each of these three curricula are used by about a third of our thirty-eight elementary and K eight schools. My math's adoption is set to expire at the end of this school year. And I'll share in a moment about our hopes and plans for a new high quality adoption. For middle grades, six through eight, Big Ideas is our current adoption. And Desmos is our supplementary program. Currently, teachers at all of our middle schools and K eights have been opting into using Desmos through our current Gates grant that I'll speak with you uh in a moment. And at high school, Savas is our algebra, geometry, algebra two adoption. Uh, with Desmos also being used at the Algebra One level at four of our comprehensive high schools and illustrative mathematics being used in a various capacities at several high schools at both the Algebra One and geometry levels. Next slide, please. Uh, we are very excited to be in the process since last spring of selecting new high quality math curriculum for TK five. We have an amazing group of teachers from across our district. And we have an advisory team that includes members from OESA, special education, English learner and multilingual achievement, as well as math coaches and site administrators. Uh, I'm super proud about the work that they've done thus far, sharing their expertise. Um, you know, all the dedication of the time that it takes to actually do a pilot, which is not easy work for teachers. Uh, it's it's amazing work that they're doing. You'll find a list of uh the members on this slide as well as our selection criteria um in those links. The two curriculum that are being piloted currently are Eureka Math Squared, which teachers have just finished piloting, and illustrative mathematics, which they will be trained in January and will pilot through February. Uh, by March, we hope to have some sort of consensus so that we can come back and present to you in the spring. Uh, we'd love to get everybody rowing together in the same boat, uh aligned with common goals and action plans with one curriculum in K five. Uh, other important timelines you'll see here also, uh, the following year, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we hope to adopt uh grade six through Algebra One and the following year, geometry and algebra two. Um, for each of these adoptions, we intend to have a clear, well-thought-out implementation plan uh that will best support teachers and site administrators in using and administering the new curriculum. Next slide, please. I wanted to share with you some information about our ongoing grants and partnerships uh that help support math teaching and learning. Firstly, we have been graced with uh with uh grants from the Cal Foundation for about six or seven years now. Uh, they've been providing funds for us for a variety of things, uh, including uh paying for part of math coaches and uh currently paying for the Zern school licenses, um, where students get to use uh it for digital lessons. Um, we have, uh, we hope to continue our partnership with Cowell and Robert Bunce at the End Fund has been helping us out with with trying to secure some funding uh this coming spring. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation uh is a three-year endeavor that we have focused on effective implementation of high-quality curriculum. Uh, in this case, Desmos six eight. Uh, we receive guidance and support from Connect Ed, our grant provider, uh, including helping set up structures as well as providing part-time math coaches and onsite uh for onsite teacher support. Funding that we receive goes primarily towards teacher professional development and we hope to develop plans in January uh for continuing Gates and Connect Ed support when the grant finishes this summer. Finally, the Chamberlain Foundation has been integral in providing teacher and leadership coaching uh as well as funding for high-quality curriculum targeting our highest need schools in both the Richmond and San Pablo communities. They've hired instruction partners to provide these services, not only in math, but in English language arts as well. Uh, I am in regular communication with members of both organizations to ensure alignment of common goals and processes. Uh, their services are a great benefit to those schools participating. Next slide, please. All right, now a little bit about our support structures. Uh, we currently are blessed with three great math coaches with years of both classroom and coaching experience. Anne Brock offers primarily three Richmond area schools, uh, the South Richmond focus being an expectation of the Cowell grant. Lily in Austria is our high school math coach hired through the A to G Improvement Grant. Thank you, College Career Department. And Shauna Foster provides support for middle grades, teachers, and some Algebra One classrooms and is with us this evening uh to share a few things that these coaches do for our teaching community. Coach Foster.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so some of the things that we do as math coaches in the district is um we facilitate facilitate individual department and grade level meetings at schools. Uh, we do lesson planning with teachers, we do lesson observations, uh, lots of debriefing afterwards to provide them with feedback. And this all, and not only that, it helps us to determine what we want to do for our upcoming PDs when we get this the observational data back. Uh, we set professional learning goals uh with our teachers and also our departments. Um, well, the math departments, because a lot of times the math departments are at a particular school will have something going on with the I O T and their own expectation. So we want to be able to fold those expectations into those department goals. Uh, we analyze data which helps determine our next steps. Our data that we gather in the classrooms is around assessment data or student work or exit tickets. Um, and any other observational data that we have. Um, and we create and facilitate uh professional development. So um, we do this sometimes at our site in Alvarado, but lately we've been actually going out into student uh to teachers' classrooms after school, right? And inviting other teachers to come join us uh for those endeavors.
Thank you, coach. Uh, I couldn't have done half the things uh these past five years without uh without Coach Foster. Um, she's been great service for us. Uh, so as Shauna mentioned, uh, part of our support is through professional learning and collaboration. If you can go back one slide, please. Uh, am I missing a slide? I guess I'm missing a slide. Um, so uh, we have a variety of different professional uh learning and collaboration opportunities. We focus on things like students' talk structures, uh implementing Zern digital lessons and lesson and unit internalization. Uh, next slide, please. So I'd like to turn our attention to the uh mathematics website, uh, our district math website. It continues to be a place where stakeholders can find and reference important information on mathematics. Uh, our support for families includes advice on how to support their child's math development, uh, year-round math digital resources, parent guides on learning about the flexibility of math thinking through multiple methods, and several links on secondary math course sequence information. Uh, within those links, there is an parent letter, math parent letter on course pathways that we've shared for some years now. If you'd be so kind to click on that link, it says math parent letter. So this letter briefly describes the shifts in math standards that came with Common Core now over a decade ago, including the rationale for why students shouldn't skip over an entire year's worth of math topics and a link with some state test examples of grade eight material. In a nutshell, before Common Core, there were no eighth grade standards. This was the case when most of us adults were going through middle school. Common Core reset the standard alignment to make it more coherent across grade levels. Much of what's in eighth grade is now our our previous algebra and geometry standards that help students best prepare for the rigors of high school math. Uh, if you scroll down just a little bit, the letter also includes quotes from the University of California Board of Admissions and Harvard University about college admissions and calculus in particular. And if you scroll down a bit more, thank you. On the next page, you'll find several examples of student math pathways that show how every student has access to higher mathematics courses, including AP Calculus when they are accelerated in high school. And finally, information for families about how they can have their child demonstrate mastery of middle grade standards, which is by assessment at the end of their seventh grade year with the potential opportunity to engage in high school mathematics in eighth grade. Besides our website, we have communication processes in place to ensure that this information is shared and available to all community members. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah, back to the slides. Thank you. Our math website also provides support for teachers, of course. This includes our WCC math teacher practices, curriculum guides and pacing guides, district math assessment information, adopted curriculum and supplementary curriculum information. It's really a great go-to resource for our teachers. Next slide, please. Finally, our math website provides support for school leaders. Our math site leadership guides includes look fours when visiting classrooms, meeting expectations for mathematics, collaborative meeting templates, protocols for internalizations, inquiry cycle templates, a lot of great stuff that can be used by site administrators to build and carry out math professional learning processes at their school site. So I've covered a lot. Curriculum adoptions, partnerships, support structures. Before we head over to check out some of the curriculum we have at the back table, I'd first of all like to thank all of, all of the teachers out there that are making great math moments happen in their classrooms every day and building that growth mindset within ourselves and within our students as well. So I want to thank you especially. And now we're open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, board. Let's go take a look at the curriculum and then come back with our three questions. It should take us no more than maybe three minutes. So we will be back on the diet at eight o'clock to ask our questions. Thank you, board. Go ahead and let's take a look. All right, board, thank you so much. We are going to have three questions. And then anyone have, anyone like to get a start, and anyone have questions? Okay, we're gonna go with Trustee Phillips first, and then Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Trustee Phillips, three questions, please.
Thank you. Superintendent Hurst, this question is actually for you. I see him walk away, though. Oh, he's coming back. Superintendent Hurst, in the presentation, Mr. Chilcott spoke about seventh graders mastering, or junior high school students mastering their work and being able to basically test into high school math, presumably Algebra I. When in the seventh-grade path are those tests available to students? Are not seventh grade, but in the junior, so like, when in junior high school can they take those tests? Are there times?
Can somebody clarify? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Trustee Phillips, I couldn't hear exactly what the question was.
So I believe what Trustee Phillips has, and let me just summarize. Trustee Phillips, let me know if I'm wrong. There was mentioned that seven, or in junior high, you can take a test that will then allow you to take a higher form of math that's presented in high school. When is that test given? Is that accurate?
Yeah, yes. So at the end of seventh grade, we offer, we offer that opportunity. So rising eighth graders. And we have a process in place to, to, to make that happen.
If a rising eighth grader passes the test, shows mastery, where do they take the higher mathematics? So where do they take algebra? So if you're past the seventh grade, and you pass, and you show mastery, where do you physically take the course? Do you take it at a junior high school with people who are your age? Or you have to go to a high school with people who are older than you?
That's, that's the challenge right now is, is really that they would need to take it at a high school. Hercules Middle High is the one most convenient to, to be able to do that. But otherwise, it would be figuring out some sort of transfer to a high school to take Algebra I.
Has there been any, and I'm sorry if I'm yelling, but people keep saying they can't hear me, so now I might sound funny. Has there been any kind of survey, any kind of outreach to figure out how parents feel about having to send their children, their junior high school children to a high school for them to be able, with older kids, for them to be able to get the math that they need?
Were you able to understand his question?
Yeah, I think so. So, thank you. I'll address this quickly. So a survey, no, I want to be clear, we have not had a broad survey. But that's also because we've been engaging with a relatively few number of families with students that have passed this mastery test. Because to be clear, at the end of seventh grade, they need to demonstrate mastery of eighth-grade standards to be able to advance, because they're skipping a full year of math instruction. So we'll take under advisement about a possible survey to go out more broadly. But currently with the, with the block schedule in El Cerrito and students taking algebra and geometry together and having that compression in one year there, and then Hercules being on the site, the two sites where the vast majority of these requests come out do have a way to accelerate without having to attend the high school earlier. And again, the numbers have been relatively low, because the vast majority of our seventh graders are not able to demonstrate mastery on an eighth-grade assessment.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chilcott. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, you had questions?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My question, it was surrounded around what we were discussing when looking at the curriculum. So just so that public can hear, President Smith Folds, we're discussing how two-thirds of our schools don't choose to use our adopted curriculum and they use our supplemental curriculum. My question is, for the 24, 25 school year, are we gonna continue that practice? Or are we gonna move to a different practice as we adopt or continue a curriculum? And I don't know if that's questions for you both, or Dr. Hurst, or Mrs. Neely Johnson.
So it's my intent that if we, if we adopt something high-quality, like we plan on, that everybody gets in the same boat and we row all together with common goals, especially it being high-quality. I think everybody will, and every school will get the materials and resources they need. We'll have professional development around it, we'll have math teacher leaders, we'll have site leadership learning. We're gonna, we're gonna do a wraparound work on, on our implementation plan. So the plan and the expectation is that we're all gonna be making things happen together as a unified school district.
Thank you. My follow-up is, have we surveyed teachers and administrators as to why they are choosing not to use adopted curriculums?
I haven't put out a survey on, on the why. I think ultimately, it's finding out from teachers what they, what they think individually about where they went with it and site leaders. But I don't have a, we don't have a survey that went out.
Thank you. President Smith Folds, that was my last question.
Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez. I have a privilege, if I may. I, through my headphones, can hear Trustee Phillips really well, so that if there's a question about what he's saying, I can actually hear it and translate it.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? No? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, my, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Superintendent Hurst, does that conclude your superintendent's communication, or is there more?
Yes, ma'am, that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We are going to move on to our action items. We have five action items. The first one, action item E1, approve the first interim for the 2023, 2024 school year. CBO Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Good evening, and good evening to Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, trustees, and Superintendent Hurst. I'm happy to be here this evening to ask for board approval of the 2324 first interim budget. I'd like to bring up Jeff Carter, Director of Business Services. He, along with myself, and also Ms. Javetta Cleveland. We are gonna be presenting this information to you this evening. Prior to starting, I'd just like to acknowledge the Business Services Team, the collaborative effort that the fiscal team and all of our staff members have shown to support the data gathering, the analysis, and the extra time and effort dedicated to preparing this report for you tonight. With that, I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Jeff Carter, our Director of Business Services, to get us started this evening. Next slide, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. My name is Jeff Carter, Director of Business Services. I'd like to start by acknowledging and appreciating the number of hours and hard work that went into the first interim report from the Business Services Team. It was, it was a huge effort to get to where we are tonight. So good evening. Next, I would like to go over the interim annual report timeline. On the slide, you can see in the upper left for June. That's when we present the adopted budget every year. This is the projected estimated revenue and expenditures for the year. If we move on to July, that is the new fiscal year, 2324 for this year. In September, we then report on the unaudited actuels, which are the final results of the previous year once we have closed the books. That was for 2223 in this September. And then the next month in December, that would be where we are tonight for first interim. This gives our financial status of as of October 31st with revisions to the adopted budget, if any trends or trajectories have changed since June. Next, we are followed by the Governor's Budget Proposal in January with an updated outlook from the state. We then go to second interim in March. That is, we'll be back here to report the data as of January 31st for second interim. In April, we then shift into budget development for the following, or the upcoming year, 2425. Then we, then we get another update from the Governor's Revision in May. This will, this will finalize our planning for the 2425 adopted budget. In June, following that, there is a potential for a third interim financial report if the district is certified as qualified or negative in the second interim. Otherwise, there will not be a third interim. And then finally, circling back to the beginning for another adopted budget in June. So that's kind of a quick summary of the timeline for interim annual reporting. Tonight, we'll also give you an update on the latest data we have on enrollment, state and federal revenue, budget assumptions, and information for all funds. If we can go to the next side slide, please. So what is the first interim process? I'd like to explain the steps involved, creating the first interim report to give context and a layout of the process. So first, we, we start by reviewing position control. How many positions do we have? How much FTE are there? How many vacancies? How are those positions funded? We then, we then compare that information to the adopted budget and what has actually been spent up until this point versus the adopted plan in June. We want to ensure all positions are sufficiently funded through June 30th, 2024, and revise staffing projection based on current vacancies. If a position has not been filled up until this point in this, in this year, we need to reallocate those funds to cover expenses incurred for substitutes, time cards, or contractors for that vacancy. We also review every fund, every resource, and every account code in our system. That's nearly 100,000 lines of financial data that needs to be reviewed and reconciled for first interim. We then look at all the expenditures to ensure alignment and compliance with the requirements of restricted and unrestricted resource accounts. Next, in addition to all of these steps, there is a lot more technical work behind that is needed to complete these tasks that would later take another presentation to go into more detail and explain all of that, which unfortunately, I don't have the time to do tonight. But once all of this is completed, we But once all of this is completed, we export that data from our financial system to a software called SACS. It's a state reporting software. It's standardized account code structure system. And this verifies all of the data from our financial system is in compliance with account code structure. The 3% minimum reserve is met, indirect cost rates are correct and contributions. Section three of the first interim report attached to tonight's presentation is compiled of these state reports from the SACS data system. This is when we bring it to the Board of Education for approval and then followed by the Contra Costa County of Education for final submission to the state. So that's hopefully this is a brief summary of the process that we go through for first interim. I hope this has been informative and thank you for your time. I'd like to pass it back to interim Associate Superintendent Kim Moses.
Thank you, Jeff. Next slide. So in the following slides, I am going to walk you through what we learned during this first interim reporting period. I'll start with the changes that we've learned of since the budget adoption in June. Initially, we learned that at unaudited actuels, we had an increased fund balance of about three and a half million, which was promising. We also had, we also discovered increased interest income of about four million, which was also promising. However, new information that we have learned is that our ADA for this current year decreased by 62 in comparison to what we expected to have in June. We also learned that there were budget, there were expenditures within our budget that were newly discovered and not included in the budget that was adopted in June. And therefore, we had to make some shifts in order to include those things. And you'll see those shifts in tonight's revised multi-year projection. We've also gotten information from the Legislative Analyst Office that due to expected economic downturn, the expected COLA of 3.95 for the 2425 school year is at this point expected to be reduced to approximately 1%. Unfortunately, what this means in this current estimation for our district is that for next year and the subsequent years, that is a loss of revenue of about three and a half 13 and a half million dollars from what we projected to have at the June adopted budget. Next slide. One of the things that we evaluated during first interim were our enrollment trends, and I am so very pleased to share with you that we have shown an increase in enrollment this year. Last year, our enrollment is reported at 25,717 students. During this preliminary CBID's analysis, what we found is that this year our enrollment is at approximately 26,132 students, which is an increase. Although we've been in a trend of decreasing enrollment over many years, we have experienced an increase this year. However, our trends are still expecting a decrease in the out years. We hope to increase that to continue with the increase, but at this moment it is just not, we weren't able to predict continued increases, but we're hopeful. Next slide. These are the revenue changes to our LCFF budget during first interim. I'd like to share that that first line of ADA shows the decrease of 62.27 in ADA. We've also shown a small decrease in our unduplicated count, which factors into the calculation of our supplemental grant funds for LCFF. If you notice at the bottom line, the total LCFF revenue in comparison to what we expected for it to be in June of 2023 has decreased 1,343,932. Next slide. This slide represents all revenue changes. The top table represents the unrestricted general fund. The second table underneath represents the combined general fund. What I'd like to draw your attention to in the top table for the unrestricted general fund is that the total revenue based upon what was adopted in June and what we found at first interim shows an increase of 893,259 to the unrestricted revenue coming in. If you look at the second table, when we combine all funds restricted and unrestricted, we show a net change of total revenue of 45,838,594. Approximately 45 million of that is on the restricted budget. Next slide. We'll now talk about the revisions to our current budget and the multi-year projections. The considerations that we use to revise these multi-year projections included the expected declining enrollment in the out years, the drop in ADA rates post COVID, we're still trying to recover, the drop in unduplicated pupil percentage and also the predicted economic downturns and the adjustments made, expected adjustments to COLA. This revision to the multi-year projections includes an expectation of a 1% COLA for the upcoming school year. We do realize that the actual rate of COLA will not be shared until January, but given our extremely tight fiscal situation, it was advised that we use the most conservative approach to creating this revised multi-year projection. Next slide. This slide represents the combined general fund multi-year summary. It shows the expectation for the current school year and also the following two years. I'd like to draw your attention to line three, the operating deficit. If you notice that the the expectation for this year's budget is that we will have a deficit of 56.7 million dollars in expenditures based upon the revenue that we're bringing in. If you notice the two out years, we're also expected to be at deficit spending. Line six actually shows that we will need to use our Fund 17 if these figures hold true after the COLA is announced in order to ensure that we can meet our 3% obligation in the general fund. I'd also like to bring your attention to the projected ending balance in the middle of the sheet. Although the projected ending balance in year one is 69 million, I'd like to show that on the restricted side of the house, 46.9 million are in restricted funds. We do have 4.68 million carrying over on this year but this year's budget if all of our factors hold true. However, if you look at the next two out years, we're expected to be very tight and just meet our obligation for the 3% reserves without any additional funding left within our operating general fund budget unrestricted. Next slide. This shows the changes to the unrestricted general fund budget after we have factored in the reduction in COLA for the the next two funding years. And again, this report shows that we will need to not only make fiscal reductions, which are in line with our fiscal solvency plan adopted by this board in accordance with the demand from the County Office of Education to address the deficit. You'll notice that the blue lines demonstrate the number of cuts that we'll need to make in the school years 24, 25 and 25, 26. The figures listed here for the reductions do not match the figures that we're aiming to cut because the cuts also take into account stepping column increases. So we'll just explain that when we do our next presentation on the reductions. I might also like to show here that we are using special reserves in order to ensure that this budget can meet the 3% reserve requirement. But if you look down to the bottom line, it shows that by year three, 25, 26, we are able to meet the 3% reserve requirement with not much left other than stores. Next slide. So during the first interim, we have to include a budget certification. When we look at the budget budget certification, we have to ensure that we can meet all of our obligations and also meet the 3% reserve requirement by the Board of Education by the state. So in 2324, we will be able to meet that 3% reserve. But it is predicted that in 2425, we will meet the 3% reserve only with the fiscal reductions being realized and also an additional 10.8 million in contributions from Fund 17. It is also estimated that in 2526, we will also meet that 3% reserve, but only with the fiscal reductions and also a contribution of 17.8 million from Fund 17. We did not do an out year for year 2627, but I did want to also mention that we did costing for that and found that if we don't have an improvement in our economic situation and our funding levels, we will likely need to make additional cuts in 2627 totaling approximately 15 million dollars. Given these factors and the uncertainty with the reductions that are needed and the decrease in COLA and an unknown of what the future revenue contributions hold, we needed to make a certification based upon the legal requirements listing on the next slide. Next slide. So the guidelines for certification are based upon our assessment of standards and criteria set by the state for fiscal stability pursuant to section 33127 of the State Board. We can certify in three separate ways, positive, qualified or negative. It is our recommendation that our certification for this first interim be qualified. Because it is projected that the district may not meet its financial obligations in one of the three years. And this is due to the structural deficiencies identified, the requirement to make reductions and also the economic uncertainties that we face in the future. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the mic Javetta Cleveland, who is our fiscal expert assigned to the county to support our efforts to address this fiscal deficit. And at the same time, I'd also like to acknowledge the hard work of Shannon Norris, who is our consultant with Ryland School Business Management. Both Javetta and both Javetta and Shannon have been instrumental in sharing their expertise in order to help us to prepare this first interim as well as to make great decisions moving forward so that our district can achieve fiscal solvency. Ms. Cleveland?
Good evening. For President Smith Folds, congratulations. Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hurst, the staff and community. As Ms. Moses has pointed out, I'm the district's the county's fiscal expert that's been assigned to the district. The Chief Business Officer, Kim Moses, I won't say interim because I'm hoping for her to be permanent, has presented the budget that incorporates significant budget reductions over the next two fiscal years. If we can go back to one of the slides, NYPD First Interim Report, Unrestricted General Fund. Thank you. I want to point out some things in this budget. There's always a question of is it real? What does it mean? So I wanted to just kind of put a stamp on some things that Kim mentioned. The expenditures that are presented in this budget are offset by the cut, the budget cut. So that's actually helping the bottom line. Those cuts are critical to be, those cuts need to be made and are critical to the district solvency. If you're looking at the 2425 year there, you see revenues and expenses and we all can understand that. You have your revenue, it looks like income, you have your expenses, which is like your costs. And anytime your expenses exceed your revenue, your deficit spending, we use that term a lot when a district is facing insolvency. You have a structural deficit, your deficit spending just like in a personal income, if you're expending more than you're bringing in, you're gonna go to the bank and hopefully you have a savings that's gonna help you for a while. But if you keep going to the bank or your expenses get even more greater and your greater, your expenses exceed your revenue by a significant amount and you're going to the bank, most people eventually will eliminate or reduce their savings to zero. So the but the district's budget, if you look at this, it is critically in imbalance. The 17.3 million dollars of cuts, if those cuts don't happen, it increases the deficit spending and I want to show you where that shows on this statement. Changes in fund balance, that's what that means. Changes in fund balance means your expenses are exceeding the revenue. And so if your expenses are exceeding the revenue by 6.8 million, which is shown in 2425 and the cuts are not made, then now you have a deficit of 24.1 million dollars. So now your expenses are exceeding your revenue by 24, 24.1 million dollars if those cuts are made. Fund 17 is also helping the 2425 budget. And so if the monies were not being transferred in to funds by from Fund 17, the district's structural deficit is 34.9 million dollars without the cuts, without the monies coming in the Fund 17, 34.9 million dollars. If these cuts are not made, there is not enough money in Fund 17 to pull additional dollars to cover those cuts. I just want to make sure that's clear. There's not enough money in the reserves to cover a 34.9 million dollar deficit that is in 2425 and another 41 million dollar deficit that would be in 2526 if the cuts weren't made and if we weren't using the reserves. There is immediate action that needs to be taken by the board. I'm always thinking about what can I say? What can I say when I'm up here? That helps everyone understand how critical this is. So the three things I came up with is I think we can all agree that the district has COVID funds and they're expiring. If you haven't heard that, the monies that were received for COVID are one-time funds. They're expiring or being fully expended or expiring and there are ongoing costs in those funds. And so those funds, those ongoing costs that are now being funded and helping the district get through this time will no longer be in 2425 and 2526. The state budget, if you've listened to the news, if you've heard anything lately and you've seen the news, the state budget has a 68 billion dollar budget deficit. There's 68 billion. So if you don't feel like, hey, maybe the state can bail out the district. If you listen to the news, the state has a huge deficit and they need to tap into their rainy day fund. And the rainy day fund is usually for things that are unforeseen. The fact that the district needs to make budget cuts is not unforeseen. It's been around. It's been talked about. It's been presented over the years. It is no longer an unforeseen circumstance. Those cuts need to be made. The other issue that Ms. Moses pointed out is the COLA has been reduced to 1% in 2425. As a conservative measure, we won't know the official COLA till January, but 1%. So that is another thing that has impacted the budget. All of these things are compounding the budget problem here at the district. The lack of going concern letter dated September 26, 23 states that the district is at risk of insolvency, which means running out of cash. That's what insolvency means. The district has projected a significant deficit spending, as I mentioned, and the district has been relying on one-time funds that will expire. That's all mentioned in the county's letter for the lack of going concern. The Contra Costa County of Ed said urgent and critical actions that need to be taken by the district. The county requires the district to submit a detailed written report with an itemized list of budget reductions by December 15th. And I understand that those that list is on the budget agenda and under discussion items. Also, budget cuts for the same amount budget cuts for the same amount of the of list that is being presented tonight need to be acted upon on January twenty fourth at the board meeting. So this board has some uh difficult decisions that must be made that is critical to the district's being able to maintain its balanced budget. And that action takes place on Ja- on January twenty four, twenty twenty four. And on the top of that, once the the list has been approved by the board, the district will be required to make uh staffing reductions at the March sixth board meeting to meet the statutory deadline of March fifteenth. So there will be another action needed in March for reduction in staff. The county can withhold compensation of the members of the governing board of the school district and the school district superintendent for failure to provide requested financial information that is outlined in the letter dated September twenty six, twenty twenty three. It's the board fiduciary's responsibility to ensure that this district is financially stable and able to meet the needs of its students. That's what the board is elected to do. It's not the um the the thing that any board member wants to face, but that is a part of the responsibility of the school board. The difficult decision that the board must approve in reductions um will be at the March sixth board meeting. If the board fails to act in a timely and reasonable fashion, the county superintendent will have to evaluate progressing to the next step in the intervention process, which has been provided to the district over the past few years. Superintendent's board's pay being suspended and moving my role from fiscal expert back to fiscal advisor, invoking a stay and rescind authority over the board's actions. I say this because I've been here before. I've encouraged the board to make the cuts in the past. I am urging the board, I am saying to the board, these cuts must be made. These are significant cuts. The state budget is uncertain, and there are some significant fiscal changes that are happening with the COVID funds expiring. There is no, we're running out of room to find money and piece together things. The board, the board's budget committee, the budget committee has done a great job coming up with budget reduction, non-staffing reductions. And then there's an additional list that has been developed for review that will be submitted to the county. Some good work has happened. But the biggest job, the biggest part of this is actually implementing and making those reductions that need to be made. So I say this with my heart. This is difficult. I'm here. I've been supporting Kim, the the business team. I will continue to do so. Um, but I'm really, really at this point pleading with you to take the action that's necessary to support the students of this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Javetta. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there public comment?
Yes, our first public comment is iPhone. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Zoom user. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I would just like to say, I, we've been through this before and black students are constantly not mentioned in what we're looking at, what we're gonna keep and what we're cutting, and they just get cut automatically in resources and services and educators who do well with our children. Can you ensure that all kids will continue to get a valuable education, equitable education? I want to ensure that black parents understand what we, what will our children have in these years going forward. All the parents need to understand, how will this affect the child in the seat at that desk? What is the outcomes? What is this district gonna, how are they gonna line these cuts up to our measured success? The roadmaps, the strategic plans we have, how is that gonna line up? And those are my grandkids in the back. So thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Zoom user. Please unmute yourself. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, we're gonna go to questions. We're gonna do the first round, three questions apiece, and then if we need to go back for another round, we certainly will. We are gonna start with, well, let me ask it this way. Does anyone have any questions? Trustee Rettler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, in the last board meeting, I believe that I left under the impression that multiple scenarios were going to come forward. I have this feeling that there is gonna be like a few things that would come forward of options. I don't feel like I'm seeing that tonight. Is there something else coming or something in the future that comes?
Thank you for the question. Um, what you'll see tonight under the discussion um item is the preliminary list that we've created based upon input from Cabinet and um what has been shared already with labor unions. The Cabinet has been hard at work with heavy thinking on what other scenarios could be. Uh, but we do not want to present additional scenarios without having thoughtful conversations with labor and also gathering some input from sites, staff, and the community. We will um make adjustments and have other scenarios for the board to consider, but not tonight at a later time after additional conversations happen.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. One of the other, I mean, really just a a line item that continues to creep up is special education line item. And there were, I guess, some misbudgeting or things were left out of the budget for this round. Is there a plan or can there be a plan to really look at what is happening there and to, you know, really do a deep dive and a brainstorm into what might at least stem, if not roll back, cost increases?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we are, um, the business services team is keeping a close eye on expenditures from special ed this year. We're doing things a little differently. I'm in conversation with uh Selpa Director Fleishman every day discussing expenditures to special ed. We're also having this early discussions about ways in which we can um analyze exactly what's happening with the budget and the assignment of services to find out if there are areas in which which things can be shifted or possibly reduced. Um, however, with the services to our needy students, there are some requirements that uh we must abide by, which make it difficult to make deep reductions in that area. But every effort is being made um by the business services team, the special education team, and the cabinet to examine those and to bring ideas forward in order to support forward thinking about how to um align services more tightly in order to find some savings in the budget where possible.
And then finally, for I guess it would be the second interim. Does the county need a positive or does the county need a qualified? Is it anything, is it, yeah, I guess that's.
That is a good question. If our second interim is qualified, we will absolutely have to have a third interim. If the third interim continues to be qualified, I think that raises our level of concern. And it enacts some additional supports, for example, the stay and rescind for the fiscal advisor. Yes.
Thank you so much, Trustee Rettler. That's three, and we'll do another round if you have more. Anyone else? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Thank you uh so much for the presentation. And um could you please correct me if I'm wrong on the next steps? The board tonight receives the first interim and the discussion item on staffing cuts. January twenty fourth, the board votes on a preliminary list on the cuts uh on people. And then March sixth, we finalize that list. Is that correct or or not fully?
Yes, and um the January twenty fourth list is going to be extremely important because we know that there is a lot of work that has to be done behind the scenes with labor and with HR in order to prepare for that March sixth meeting. So if the question is, do we have until March fifth, March sixth to finalize the the reduction list, the answer to that question would be no, because that would only give our human resources department nine days to get those official documents together. Um, what we'd like to happen is to have discussions, discussions with labor and other partners throughout the month of January so that we're we're hopeful that that January twenty fourth list will be closer to what we actually need to do March sixth and that if there are any changes between January twenty fourth and March sixth, they aren't deep changes in order to ensure that our team can be efficient and also so that they can be sensitive to this very difficult time for our staff members and ensure that conversations are had in a thoughtful way and people have enough notice and that we've done uh these reductions with as much grace as possible.
Thank you for that. Um, so will sites have an opportunity from now to January twenty fourth to engage in the conversation about, for lack of better words, purchasing with their site funds positions that are being cut? So that they are transferred from our general fund to site funds? Is that gonna be a possibility or or not?
Well, I'm not sure that that conversation can happen before January twenty fourth with our sites specifically because sites have to know what their allocations will be for the upcoming school year. I do expect that to be done during the months of January and February, but I am not absolutely certain when we'll be able to get next year's uh categorical budgets or restricted budgeted amounts to the sites for them to make those such, for them to make those decisions. However, they may have an idea of what they have and what they want, and they can start having those discussions with their school site councils because with restricted funds, especially uh the title funds, there must be agreeance from the school site council on how those funds are spent. Um, so we won't have any quick answers in January, but I do think that as we get closer to the March sixth date, there might be more answers available from sites.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moses. Presidents and Folds, I had another question, but I cannot remember it. So if I remember the second round, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Uh, Trustee Christian, you have questions?
Yes, I do. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, yeah, my question is basically, you know, just, you know, listen to everything, but how many positions were were created out of the COVID funds?
Well, um, I think a better question is how many positions were paid from the COVID funds. Uh, the way in which we've been using those funds is to ensure that we can provide quality services for our students as we recover from the pandemic. And what that's meant in some cases is instead of making reductions, we've shifted salaries over to the COVID funds. These are not necessarily new positions, but they were existing positions that needed um additional revenue in order for us to be able to afford. Currently, um, in our last COVID fund of ESER three, uh, we started out the year with about twelve million and salary shifted over to ESER. I believe that some of the adjustments that we needed to make during first interim might have increased that by seven. Sorry, Jeff did these numbers. Okay, how about how much of that? Uh, Jeff is saying that right now, sitting on ESER three is ninety FTE. We don't have a rounding figure, but that is more than the twelve million that we started the year with. Uh, depends upon what the positions are, how much they cost, but if I had to estimate, I would estimate that we probably have upwards of sixteen or seventeen million in positions on ESER three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Presidents and Tools stepped out. Um, anyone else have any questions? Trustee Phillips, do you have any questions? Okay, uh, we're gonna do a second round. Did anyone else have additional questions? Trustee Rettler, we'll start with you.
I do. So in this budget scenario, how are you treating the sunshining of the of the kind, you know, the sunshine in contracts of with the United Teachers of Richmond?
Well, we're currently in negotiations with uh several unions, and we are getting ready to start negotiations on those sunshine agreements with uh uh the United Teachers of Richmond. At this point, um, I am not sure how those negotiations will land, given our fiscal situation. Um, what I think I can say with certainty is if there are increases to the contract, we'll have to make reductions in other places to afford that because our current multi-year projection doesn't leave anything on the table to add to our current expenditures.
And what's the timing of that? Like, when would that next round of reductions come? Would this also need to re-wrapped up by the January timeline that was talked about just earlier?
Uh, we hope to have a pretty um close to to finished reduction list by the end of January for that board meeting. Um, by March sixth, we will have an absolute um final list of what needs to happen in terms of the board action for reduction in force.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm done.
You're welcome.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, Presidents and Tools. I remember my question. Um, can you, Ms. Moses, could you speak about the impact of vacancies, both in the first interim as well as on the list of cuts?
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, I did hear um a number of four hundred current vacancies in the district and how that impacts our our um budget deficit. Uh, what I'd like to say first is uh the cabinet went through a thorough check of all of our vacancies to see what vacancies we could reduce and not impact services to students. The majority of the vacancies that we have on Ed joint currently are paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals are tied to direct student services. If there's a job for a paraprofessional, that means that there was a student or a classroom that by law needs that support. Those jobs cannot be cut. Even if we aren't able to hire people to take those jobs, by law, we can't cut them because they're tied to services for our special education students. So that's one challenge. Those jobs can't go. In addition, on the teacher's side, we must have fully staffed classrooms and our programs must go on. So based upon our student-to-teacher ratio, we must have a certain number of teachers in the district. For that reason, there aren't any classroom positions or a site-based program positions funded from general fund that are on that list. Um, there may be some positions that don't show on the list that show as vacancies because they are restricted funded. If the positions are restricted funded, cutting them or putting them on this list of reductions does not help our bottom line for the operating budget. So if there is a position that is funded by Title One or Title Three or a CTIG grant or a COW grant, cutting those positions will not help our bottom line. I would like to say, though, that positions that are placed on those type of soft funding sources, which is what we call grant or restricted funds that are not guaranteed year over year, those positions also must be reduced at the conclusion of the school year so that we can ensure that there will be money in those grant funds to continue those positions. If we do not cut both the positions from the fiscal solvency plan and positions that are on soft money, even though those soft money positions could come back, we have to ensure with one hundred percent certainty that we have enough funding for those positions. So a vacancy list is made up of lots of different scenarios. But what we've done as a cabinet with the list that we're gonna present you later tonight is we've looked at every position, general funded in the unrestricted side. That is not tied to a specific student or service that we could put on this list, and that's how that list was developed.
Thank you, Presidents and folks. I'm done.
Anyone else have any questions? CBO Moses, I do have. I have two questions. I don't know if the first one is misplaced and I need to wait, so I'm gonna ask it. And if I ask it in the wrong spot, please let me know and I'll I'll do it somewhere else. When we look at our employees, there's a seniority list. How accurate is that seniority list to the employees that we have, right? So have we went through it and make sure that Betty is not on there and she retired two years ago? Have we went through it and made sure that because three people left, that puts everybody else up? How how do we do that? And have we done that?
So that is a question I'd have to defer to Dr. Johnson in HR, but I can tell you, I know they're engaged in that work.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, CBO Moses. She is correct. We are actually involved in that work right now. We have recently just sent out forms to all of our teachers to confirm their credentials, because we want to make sure those are accurate. We are reviewing, we actually had a meeting this morning to review our certificated and class list that we have generated and ensuring that the date of hire is accurate. And then we look at that and compare it to what we have in a system that we called Munis. And we also work in conjunction with our labor unions to confirm the accuracy with Teamsters we meet every week. To look over those seniority lists to when we get to this point, making sure that the appropriate people are identified and that there are no errors. So we are, the HR department is very involved in that work at this moment in preparation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. CBO Moses, my next question is, I just wanna kind of line up the numbers in my head. Currently, we're looking to reduce by seventeen million or nineteen million. And I'm rounding.
Yes, I was gonna go over that in the next presentation, but I think it's appropriate here as well. So the way in which our fiscal solvency plan is written, the one that was adopted in June. What we show are the reductions that need to be made. Let me give you these figures, and I'm gonna round too.
Okay.
Okay, so fifteen point one million reduction in salaries and fourteen point six million. I'm sorry, not fourteen, four, four point six million in non-salary items. For a total of nineteen point seven million. However, within that same reduction plan, they show an offset for the stepping column increases. So they're showing that the stepping column increases in this plan amount to two point three million. So when you subtract the nineteen point seven million from the two point three million. That is where that figure of seventeen point three million on the balance sheet comes from. I don't know why they lumped stepping column with the reductions, but that is the way in which the list was submitted and approved.
Thank you so very much. So the county is looking for seventeen point three million dollars in cuts. And they don't really care where it comes from. They just need seventeen point three million. We just have to hit that number. Is that accurate?
Nineteen point seven million is the accurate number. The the decrease of two point three million is our business services team in June of twenty twenty-three. Offsetting stepping column with reductions. So the list that the county is looking for is nineteen point seven million. But when we add in the stepping column, then the difference is the seventeen point three. I know it's confusing.
But they want nineteen point seven?
Yes.
Okay, that's the bottom line. They want nineteen point seven.
That is what they're looking for.
Thank you so very much. I am complete. Any other questions? No? Okay. We need to take action on this item. Kirk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. I make a motion that we approve the first interim with a qualified certification.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Any discussion? We're gonna have one minute discussion. Any discussion? Uh, trustee Phillips, I think that we're gonna do two minutes instead of one minute, sir. Two minutes on the clock, please. And as soon as you see the clock, trustee Christian, or sorry, trustee Phillips, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you for the present. Can people hear me? Okay, so thank you for the presentation. To Ms. Cleveland, thank you for imparting the urgency on us. We've been having this conversation for quite some time, and it's true that this is not unforeseen. I think that there was a hope that things would play out differently than they have. But the state is having its own issues. The COLA is being cut. All of those things that, you know, needed to line up in order for business to continue as usual or at least longer. Those things haven't lined up. So it is important that the board follows through with its obligation to make sure that the district is fiscally solvent. I do want to make one clarification, because I did ask for different scenarios. And the clarification, different scenarios around reductions or cuts. I do want, the clarification is this, I understand that, you know, a significant amount of those cuts are going to be in staffing. Now, it's not that I want to eliminate staff, but it's just about making the decision that needs to be made. And so when I asked for different scenarios, I was asking primarily for different scenarios of what staffing might look like, not how do we do this without cutting any staff, because I think that's impossible.
Thank you so much, trustee Phillips. Anyone else have anything to say? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. Ms. Moses, Ms. Cleveland, thank you so much for your presentations. So obviously, these conversations are never easy. I think that the decisions that we have made in the past were the right ones to soften the difficult times sites will have with cuts. But as we have heard over and over again in the last few months. Unfortunately, this is the year that we have to make some decisions and we can't avoid it. My hope, which I believe Ms. Moses and Dr. Hurst have the vision for this, is that in the next month. We will work with labor to ensure that any question about the budget is answered, any question about staffing issues is addressed. I don't think that labor will ever agree that we have to cut staffing. I mean, that's just not their reality. Because they have to stand up for every employee that affects them. The reality, though, is that I hope that we can come out with at least some agreement on the long-term impact of this budget on all sides. And I think that also includes community. So a challenge in a month is how are we going to also include the larger community in this conversation? Because, you know, the clock is ticking. And the reality is that a lot of people don't know of the work that's been happening and the impact that we're currently in our reality exists. So I look forward to seeing what else comes forward from the budget department. And if we can support that communication with larger community, please let the board know. Because we do have some difficult decisions ahead that I want community to come and voice their thoughts on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Anyone else? I do have a comment. I want to thank CBO Moses. Thank you for the presentation. Thank your team for the presentation. I was at DL Caps last night and Mr. Carr. He did a wonderful job. He both of you speak very plainly, which is what needs to happen when you're talking about budget. It doesn't need to be a hidden discourse that only some people understand. It needs to be very clear so everyone has an understanding about the budget, because this is public money. So we want to make sure that we're very clear about it. I want to piggyback on what Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy said. January should be money talk. The whole month, we should talk about nothing but money at every meeting and every engagement, every site that we go to. Every labor partner that we have, we should talk about nothing but money. We need to have those internal conversations and those external conversations, and we really need to be crystal clear about where we are, how we got here, what we're doing, and what the future looks like. Tonight, we heard very clear from Ms. Cleveland that if you don't do this, then this happens. Those if-then sentences need to be impregnated in everything that we talk about. If we don't do this, then we do that. And I do agree that options coming to the table for the board as soon as possible for us to have those discussions would benefit everyone, because we want to make sure that we're able to have intelligent, long-winded, deep-dived conversations. Because we are dealing with people. So thank you very much, everyone. I really appreciate it. Again, January, nothing but money talk. I'm complete. I was looking to you like, next? Okay, I'm complete. Thank you very much. We have to vote. Sorry about that. All right, so we are going to vote with the discussion complete. We are going to start, I had it backwards. We're gonna start with our student trustees, and then we're gonna go to our board trustees. We are voting to approve the first interim from twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, qualified. With a with a title of qualified. Trustee Cypress, Cypress Cert.
Cypress Cert, yes.
Trustee Calip.
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips. He said yes. Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving to action item E two, Tara Hills Elementary School Playground Improvement Change Order Approval. Mr. Freeze, I believe this is your item.
Yes, first I'd like to congratulate President Smithfolds and Superintendent Hurst. Tonight, we bring forward three action change orders for you. The first one is Tara Hills Elementary School, and all three are related to playground improvements we did over the summer. Change order number two for Tara Hills Play Structure Improvements. Is to add additional asphalt underlayment underneath the play structure. The play structure was unforeseen condition prior to the structure being removed. We didn't know there was an asphalt underneath the current matting, so asphalt had to be added. In addition to Tara Hills, all these projects require ADA accessibility improvements. The existing site was not accessible from the parking lot, so we had to add additional paving to make it accessible from parking to the site. This total change order is sixty-five thousand dollars, and it brings the total contract to three hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars.
Thank you very much. Do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any questions? Yes, trustee Reckler?
Thank you. The comment is the same for the all, for all three of the playground changes, so I'll just sum them up all here. What could be done to right-size these contracts so that they come correct, rather than, I mean, this was, this, you know, Tara Hills is twenty-five percent over Stewart. Thirty-five percent over Kensington. Three and then eighteen point nine. I mean, it feels like they're almost artificially low, and then they come back in and they're like, oh, we found this, 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 and this. So what? What? What can you do so that it's more right the first time?
So one of the things, that's a good question. One of the things we're trying to do this year in our next round of play structures. Learning from some of our past mistakes on these is really doing a better assessment of our sites. We rely on some of the past projects that were previously approved, that input, put in some of these improvements are ready for the accessibility. But when we're on site and we actually have to go back out and re-measure those improvements and slopes, we find out that some of those items were not installed correctly in the first place. And so some of this is reworked that it happened. So what we're doing now is going out and actually verifying the sites to make sure the conditions are accurate. And whether or not, we're making those additions to the plans, so we don't run into this problem next year. So just better investigation of front work to ensure that we don't run into the same change orders next year.
And then if the board voted no and the motion failed, what would happen?
We would have a problem. We have, we have work that was completed already onsite, and we would owe the contractor.
Okay, thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Or can I get a motion? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. I move that we approve the change order for the Tara Hills Elementary Playground Improvement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Board, is there any discussion? Trustee Reckler?
Yeah, it's really important that these get right-sized. I mean, there's always stuff that you're not gonna know, but, I mean, it, this just feels you know, with change orders that big, it just feels like there's a lot more work that needs to be done on the outset to prevent it from coming back. Because the board has no action right now. We, you know, it's like money has already been spent, the repairs have been done, it comes after the fact. So I would, I would appreciate having that one too. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll take a vote.
President?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, trustee Phillips. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
No problem. It's not just the play structures, it's our projects, period, that are related to facilities. So it would be nice, and I'm not a public works attorney. But it would be nice if we were able to put something in these contracts to discourage, and I don't know what this looks like, whether it's some kind of clause. But something to discourage this, because it does constantly happen. And our response, right, is to, it's almost like we know that they're gonna ask for more money. So when we put these projects together, we just bake more money in because we know they're gonna ask for it sooner or later. And that really shouldn't be the response. We should try our best to get that. You know, the actual estimates are as close to them as possible upfront and have something in the clause. Some kind of clause in there that just triggers, you know, hey, if you do this, you know. If you tell us it's gonna cost ten dollars. And unless there's something that's like truly unforeseen and it costs twenty dollars. You know, you're gonna have to eat five of it, right? And I'm just making that up, but something to stop these people from doing this, because they have been doing it ever since I've been here, and I know they've been doing it longer than that.
Thank you very much, trustee Phillips. Anyone else? Mr. Freeze, I think you heard from both trustees about looking at the contract. Right-sizing it, first of all. Second of all, looking at contract language to see if there's anything that prevents this second and third bite at the apple that we are doing. So if you could discuss that with Dr. Hurst, and then you guys come back to us and let us know what you've decided to do, how you've decided to kind of adjust that, and how, what kind of language you have put in that. That would be great. Thank you so much. Did we vote? Nope. We need to vote. Okay. We are voting on E two, Student Trustee Cypress Cert.
Cypress Cert, yes.
Cypress Cert, I'm sorry. Uh, trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. That passes. We are now moving to E three.
Yes, E three is for Stewart Elementary School Playground Improvements. This particular change order, again, is for improvements to ADA accessibility. Uh, this particular change order again is for improvements to ADA accessibility and unforeseen conditions that are around the play structure. Um, this structure matter had abutted the building and when that was removed, there was no waterproofing separating the matting between the building. Uh, the resolution was to install a concrete curb around the edge of the building and waterproof that to give us a separation to protect the building um from any, for the deterioration due to moisture. This particular change order we're bringing forward tonight is for ninety-five, $94,180. It is 35.6% change order, bringing the total contract at $358,580.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you so much. Board, do we have questions? Seeing none. Board, can I have a motion?
Presidents and Folds, I'll make a motion that we approve the change orders for Kensington Elementary School Playground Improvement.
Are we on Kensington or Stewart? Stewart.
I'm sorry. I jumped to the next one. Uh, Stewart.
Thank you so much. Is there a second? I'll second that. Board, any discussion?
Clerk Smith Folds, I was wondering if I could.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add my two cents to the last conversation. I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Freeze. Um, I mean, it's not so much about these ones. It makes me think about the larger improvements, like at Pinell Valley High School, where we even had change orders where like there were mistakes made by the builders, right, or the architects per se, and then we had to pay for that. I wonder if there is some way to create language in the contract where mistakes made unforeseen circumstances that could have been avoided through the inspection done correctly, things like that, where it has to come out of their own funds. Um, anyways, just suggestions, probably not being able to happen, but um yes, thank you. I just, I, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you, President Smith Folds.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments? I do want to let everyone know that trustee Christian has left. That's why if you don't hear me calling him, he has left. Um. Anything else? Any other discussion? Um, Mr. Freeze, I don't know if this is the right word and Dr. Johnson, hold your pearls. Can we create a hit list? Like you done messed up, so we not using you anymore. Is there some kind of list that we create of the people that have kind of not done what we, the level of standard that we want? Is there that list out there and can we start creating it? Because we pay them.
So the, the, there, as you put it, the list, right, there's the architects and then there's our contractors. It's, architects we can control, contractors, the lowest responsive responsible bidder is much more difficult to uh, control. Um, we do uh, ask the questions to make sure all is inclusive in the, in the, in the bids that they produce. Um, but trying to um eliminate a contractor from the work, it can be done, but it's very difficult and it's a pretty tall um hill to climb in order to meet that threshold in order to do that.
Thank you so very much. Okay, board, let's take a vote. Um, we are now going to vote on E3, Stewart Elementary School Playground Improvement Change Order Approval. Trustee Cypress cert?
Cypress cert, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips? Hold on, trustee Phillips, did you, did you have something to say?
No, I was, I'm sorry, my hand was just up, but I was saying yes.
You were saying yes. Yes. Thank you so much. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trust, uh Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. That passes. We are now moving to E4, Kensington Elementary School Playground Improvement Change Order Approval. Mr. Freeze?
Yes, uh, we bring forward Kensington, um, change orders two and three. For Kensington, we had to remove, remove concrete at the, at the front drop-off and saw what are called trunk, truncated domes, which are these yellow bumps you see. Um, in order to be compliant, those were not included in the drawings and those were missed by our architect. We also had to uh, take down the concrete curb that was around the play structure. Uh, it did not meet ADA accessible grades in order, in order to meet grades, we had to take down the curbs and then regrade and pave out underneath the play structure before that could be installed. This change order coming before you tonight is $56,817. Um, bringing the total contract at 300, I'm sorry, $310,517.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion? Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you. I'll do it right now. Uh, I move that we approve the change order for Kensington Elementary School Playground Improvement.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Board, any discussion? Trustee Reckler?
Okay, so it is not okay that the architect missed that and then we have to pay for it. That's not okay. That is not okay. And they should get the bill back. I don't know what you call it in your industry. We call it the bill back in my industry, but that's, that's ridiculous. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Phillips?
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback on the last thing I said, I mean, it's not just about being the lowest bidder, right, because you know, I could tell you, you know, that I could do the project for $10, you know, and I would be the lowest bidder if I told you I can do it for $10. But we all know that I can't really do the job for $10. So I feel like what has happened in the past is that people are bidding artificially low. And then what's happening is they're coming back and then asking for the real money that they were going to get the entire time, but that they're bidding artificially low to get the contracts. And I really think that that's what's happening. And I think that that's illegal and I don't think that we have to accept that.
Thank you very much, trustee Phillips. Anyone else? Mr. Freeze, you've heard loudly from the board that this is making us itch. So we need to do something different. There needs to be a do different in this. Board, are we ready for the vote? Okay, we're going to start with student trustees. Student trustee Cypress cert?
Cypress cert, yes.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeze, and we look forward to you coming back to us and letting us know how we're putting down the hammer. Thank you. Alright, we are moving to E5. Board, it is 9:22. Listen, we're going to keep that same energy that we did with President Gonzalez Hoi. We're going to move it along, move it along. Alright. E5, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP Program Plan. Um, CAO Johnson, I believe this is your item.
Yes, it is. Um, thank you again. Congratulations again. I'm President Smith Folds. Um, today I'm bringing the um, ELOP program is the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan and we have Casey Blackburn-Jaron, who is our Expanded Learning Coordinator, and she is going to do her presentation. We are bringing this for a approval, approval. This is required by the legislature. And so um, you can ask questions at the end and we will go as quickly as possible. So she has also provided you a one pager for reference.
Good evening, board trustees, Superintendent Hurst. Congratulations, Board President Smith Folds. Um, I'm here to talk to you today about, or this evening, about expanded learning programs in the district and to provide a little bit more context to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan that um, you will be reviewing and hopefully approving later this evening. Next slide, please. So let's, let's start with some definitions from ed code. So as far as ed code is concerned, they use the terms expanded learning and expanded learning opportunities interchangeably. And the focus is on providing young people with more opportunities to develop academic, social, emotional and physical needs through hands-on learning experiences. These programs should include community partners and are very intentionally designed not to replicate, but instead complement the core instructional day. Next slide, please. So what does that look like in WCCUSD? So we use the term expanded learning specifically to refer to after-school, summer and other intercession, non-school day programs like Saturday programming, spring break camp and winter break camp. In our district, much like surrounding LEAs, we partner with local youth-serving nonprofit organizations that we call lead agency partners who provide the day-to-day operations of programming. These partners have been rigorously vetted through a request for proposal process that started back in 2012. This spring, our request for proposal process was folded under procurement's request for qualifications process. Prior to the release of Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Funds, we mostly offered after-school programming. We didn't have programming for non-school days. This is a new thing for the district through ELOP funding. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. Alright, so this slide shows the four expanded learning funding streams that we have in the district. ACES, 21st Century and ELOP. ACES is an elementary and middle school specific funding stream. It is after-school only. 21st Century Elementary Middle School Funding Stream. It is for both after-school programming as well as non-school day programming. Assets is the high school thread of 21st Century. And lastly, our newest funding stream for expanded learning, ELOP. This is based on an apportionment to the district. Sorry, this is based on an apportionment to the district based on the previous year's TK through sixth grade unduplicated count. These funds were first loaded in January 2022. You can see that these funds must support a nine-hour program day. So for after-school, this includes the instructional day plus the after-school program. On nine, on non-school days, this is nine hours of enrichment. Alright, so the current allocation for ELOP can include carryover. But those funds must be spent on ELOP programs. And this is the important bit. We don't know if this is an ongoing funding stream, given the current budget scenario. Next slide, please. And then briefly here, you can see who has priority enrollment across the district's expanded learning programs. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about how the district is prioritizing its use of ELOP funds. So first, ELOP funding is allowing us to increase the number of after-school slots that we have at our Title I elementary schools across the district. ELOP funding is also allowing us to provide access to after-school programming for unduplicated TK through sixth grade students who are at schools that do not have an onsite after-school program. And three, ELOP funding is allowing us to enhance the quality of our elementary after-school programs by bringing in specialty or boutique enrichment providers like visual and performing arts providers, STEM providers. And then lastly, ELOP is allowing us really for the first time to provide enriching, non-school day programming for our students. Next slide. So here you can see the elementary and secondary sites across the district that have expanded learning after-school programs. I want to highlight that the schools that do not have an asterix are funded through ACES. So their, their base funding is after-school only. The schools that have an asterix next to them are funded entirely through ELOP. Next slide, please. So why do some district schools have after-school programs and others do not? So first and foremost, it's important to note that CDE funding for expanded learning programs is based on student needs. This is why unduplicated students have priority enrollment across all of our programs. So currently, the district has comprehensive after-school programs at all Title I schools that are above 50% free reduced lunch. Title I schools are theoretically competitive for expanded learning funding. So every time there is an opportunity to apply for expanded learning funding, we apply on behalf of our schools. So what about those elementary schools that have unduplicated kids but do not have an after-school program? So first, we have a limited number of lead agencies. And two, not all of our unduplicated families want access to programming. But what we do, the Expanded Learning Office each spring, we reach out to all of the elementary school principals who do not have an after-school program and we provide them with an after-school interest survey to share with their unduplicated families. If that school has at least 60 unduplicated families who are interested in having an after-school program at their site, we're able to match them with a lead agency partner. And this has allowed us to open up programming at Stewart as well as Harding Elementary School. If we do not have at least 60 families at a school that have expressed interest in an after-school program, we then set up a system to bring these students to a host after-school program. So moving forward, we have three hosting after-school programs for this year. Harding Elementary will serve eligible Madera and Kensington students. Valley View will serve Alinda's students and Stewart will serve Collins, Ellahurst, Hannah Ranch, Lupine Hills and Aloney students. So how's this going to happen? So in January, these three hosting after-school programs are going to be hosting open houses for families to come out and see the program and do a program walkthrough. Moving forward, every spring, every May, these hosting after-school programs will host an open house. So we'll work with site administrators at these schools to get the words out to families. And we have a very nifty sequel report on Power School that allows us to identify who the eligible students are so we can do targeted outreach. So once we have this list of families who are opting into after-school programming at a host school, we are going to work with procurement to safely transport the students to the host after-school program. The hosting program is going to have a dedicated staff person who is responsible for meeting students and walking them to their after-school classroom. And families will be asked to pick up their students from the hosting program. Families can be reimbursed for pickup. The reimbursement would cover the cost of mileage from their home school to the host after-school program on the days the child attended after-school programming. So timeline, program of open houses will be in mid-January and we are anticipating that we will have students starting mid to late February 2024. Next slide, please. So now let's talk about the expansion of non-school day programming made possible by ELOP funds. So as I said earlier, through ELOP funding, the district is able to operate nine-hour day intercession programs throughout the year for unduplicated TK through sixth grade students. Participating students receive breakfast, lunch and supper. Intercession programs to date have been largely hosted at Title I schools in Richmond and San Pablo because the majority of our du, unduplicated students reside, reside there. Location of these programs, as well as the number of students served, is contingent on approval by facilities and by the hosting side admin. So just to give you a sense of what Saturday programming has looked like, we've had a, a number of sports field days and we partnered with Headwaters Science Institute to do some environmental ed days. We hosted our first set of spring break camps, spring of this year. We identified We identified Bayview, Coronado, King, Lincoln, Nystrom, and Perrys to pilot our spring break program, which included Sylvan Intervention in the morning and specialty enrichment providers in the afternoon. And this past summer, we offered a number of summer programs in addition to providing families full-day programming for elementary summer school. We also offered full-day summer enrichment camps. And we partnered with community-based organization partners like the Ed Fund and Richmond Parks and Recs to support slots out of Camp Achieve. We also are piloting our very first winter break camp next week. I'm very excited about this. At Downer Elementary School, and they will be serving students from Downer as well as surrounding schools. Next slide, please. So the ELOP program plan details what we're really doing in terms of programming in expanded learning. But I did want to just give you guys this visual so that you could see what our core program pillars are. So you can see our base is youth development. It's high-quality youth development. And then we've got literacy, structured homework support, STEM, health and wellness, college and career, visual and performing arts, and family engagement. And at the top, youth leadership and youth voice. These program pillars were identified very specifically to support the graduate profile and the district's priorities around literacy, in addition to supporting the district's wellness policy. Next slide. I'm just gonna end here with talking a little bit about program quality. So program quality is incredibly important to our theory of action. So kids who come to high-quality after-school programs have better adult outcomes. And so we really focus on supporting program quality across all of our expanded learning sites. In 2012, the Expanded Learning Office adopted the Youth Program Quality Assessment Tool, a research-based quality assessment tool, along with a continuous quality improvement process. This year, we transitioned from the Youth Program Quality Assessment Tool to the Social-Motional Learning Quality Assessment Tool, which is a lot more rigorous. So in addition to that, we also do parent and youth surveys twice a year. And the program quality data is compiled twice annually. So in February, programs receive their mid-year program profile. It has their quality data from their external assessment, their self-assessment, along with their youth and family survey data, and their semi-annual attendance data. And then again, at the end of the school year, they receive their final program profile that has their three points of observation, along with both sets of their youth and family survey data. So I think I can end here. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so very much. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, do we have any questions? I see Trustee Phillips and Trustee Reckler will do three questions. And then if we need to do more, that's fine. But let's start with round one. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. For the children who are from the visiting schools. So for example, a child who attends Alinda, who will be going to Valley View. How are the children supposed to get there for the after-school program?
Were you able to hear his question?
I believe so. He wanted to know, he asked about how children from an elementary school that doesn't have a program was gonna get to their hosting after-school program site. So the answer to that question is, we're working with procurement. And the district is gonna contract to have buses pick students up and bring them to the host after-school program site.
Okay, is that something that you guys are sure is gonna happen, or is that just kind of like an idea that's out there floating?
We gotta make it happen. It's gonna happen.
Yes, it's a part of the programming. And so like Casey said, there will be open houses to determine interest. And once we figure out which students will be participating, then we will provide the transportation for those students who cannot get from their school to the hub. Many of the students, though, like she said, if parents choose to transport students or pick up students, they don't have to ride the bus. They can receive mileage.
Okay, thank you. Then there was a comment about the first winter break program, which is really cool. Is that a pilot that you're, is it a pilot where the idea is to see if it works and expand it? Or what is it?
It is a pilot because we've never done a winter break camp before. We're hoping that it's gonna go well. This is really our first hub. When we did our spring break pilots, those were school-specific. So this is the first time, we're hosting it at Downer, but we've opened it up to students from surrounding schools. So we've got about 135 kids who've enrolled.
Really cool. That's really cool. And then my third question is-
That's your fourth question, sir. We gonna come right back to you. That was four. That was, don't worry about it. We gonna come right back. Uh, Trustee Reckler? Hold that question. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I would like to understand better the academic component of the after-school programs. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my vision or my thinking is that really the after-school program was created to give more time to academics because of COVID. And I think that, no, that's wrong. Alright, great. Would you be able to talk about the academic portion?
So first, let me just say that after-school programming in this district has been going on for, I think, a couple of decades. So ACES funding, state ACES funding, is actually based on federal Twenty First Century funding that I believe was launched by Bill Clinton. So it's been around for a while. In terms of what the academic component of an after-school program looks like, it is kind of a continuum. So for some of the programs, we have structured time for homework support. Some of our programs offer book clubs. Some of our programs have teachers who are doing tutoring with students in the after-school time. We have partnered with Alma, and we are working very closely with them. See if we can increase the number of students who are in after, number of English learners in after-school who are re-designated. Last year, 25% of our English language learners in our school program were re-designated.
Okay, thank you for that correction that I didn't know. The, uh, would you be able to tell me, or else, for the surveys? I've seen lots of contracts come through for surveys and, you know, vetting the quality of the programs. Are those public? Can people look them up? And have the district ever come in and said, you're not performing well enough? You need to improve in XYZ area, or have they discontinued a program due to not meeting their goals or improving their goals?
So let me take that in pieces. So you asked about the surveys. So this is the first year that we're gonna do two administrations of youth and family surveys. The first one, we handed out the surveys, we sent out the surveys last week. And they're due back to our office at the end of January. And then we'll do another one in late April, early May. And so the survey data is available. They're included in the program profiles. And so after-school programs bring them back to their school sites. And they share them theoretically with the school community outreach worker, the community school director, and the school site administrator. So, so that's surveys. And then you asked about program quality and whether or not we've ever intervened if a program has not done, or a partner has not done what they were supposed to do. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, basically. I mean, you know, if they're, if they didn't score well, or, you know.
Yeah.
What, you know, are you using it to drive to a better program?
That is the goal of having our continuous quality improvement process. I'm sure that programs are very sick of hearing me talk about it. But a lot of the work of the Expanded Learning Office is to provide ongoing technical assistance and support to our lead agency partners around program quality along with attendance, because most of our grants are attendance-based. And so there are lots of levels of intervention by our office. When we have a concern with a lead agency and an after-school program, we bring them in, we sit them down, we go through the program data, and they come up. We come up collaboratively with a quality action plan. And then we work with them to try to work through the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. At the end, I have two brief comments.
Any other questions? If not, we're gonna go back to Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, last year, and this is related to the winter program. Uh, last year, I had asked about food over the winter break for the kids, because they get fed, you know, during the summer, but not during the winter. And it was kind of around wintertime. So it wasn't anything that necessarily could have been done. But what are we doing this year to actually, uh, help feed the kids who depend on school lunch during winter break?
Trustee Phillips, this is, sorry, this is Sonya. And I would just say that I think that is a different question. If the students are participating in the winter program, then they would be getting the meals as they would if they were in the regular day program, school day program. But in terms of the district-wide distribution for all families, that is not something that would fall under this program. But it is something that I would say that I have thought about as well. And I think that's something that we would look to our food services to maybe even speak more to. But I don't want to commit to that because food services is not in my department. But any student that is participating in that winter intercession program would receive meals.
And if I could add, Sonya, every student who participates in district after-school programs receives supper.
Thank you. And it is, I'm not, I'm not asking about just these kids in this program. I'm asking about, you know, the kids generally. Uh, Dr. Hurst. So another year does not go by without us feeding the kids in the winter. Can we actually adjournize this for President Smith Folds? So we can actually have the discussion, because this is kind of the answer that I got last year.
So Trustee Phillips said, and essentially that we need to have conversations about feeding children during the breaks. The winter break, the spring break, what we do during the summer. He wants to have a board conversation about what does it look like to have meals for students during those designated breaks on the calendar. Trustee Phillips, was that an accurate summary?
Yeah, but we feed them in the, you know, we feed them in the summer.
You're talking about winter and spring break, correct?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, when we don't feed them.
Yes. Thank you, Trustee Phillips. You have another question?
No, that was it. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else have another question? I do have a question. One of my questions is, how many of our special ed students attend these programs? And do we intentionally reach out to those students who are mainstreamed in special ed? Or those students who are, are, have IEPs and 504s? Do we reach out to those students and provide opportunities for them to participate in these programs?
So I'd need to get back to you with the actual number of special ed students we're currently serving. After-school programs and expanded learning programs, so intercession programs, are open to any eligible kid. Period. So we're lucky with this new ELOP funding. We're actually able to pay for instructional aides who can come in and work one-on-one with students. Before, we had ELOP funding, we just had ACES. And ACES funding is based on a ratio of one to 20 students. So we couldn't use, there was no flexibility in that funding, because we wouldn't meet our attendance targets.
Thank you very much. I look forward to you coming back to the board with that. I really appreciate it. The second question that I have, and this is my final question. The district buses are special ed students, if they have it on their IEP and if they qualify it. This would be a time where the district is busing students, right? Not our special ed students, but students. Have we looked into what that looks like? Is there gonna be another adult on the bus to handle any discipline issues? Do we have a plan in place to talk to, let's say, the the teachers or the adults that do afternoon pickup? To say, this is the designated place where these kids go to get picked up? I know that at Lupine, we have a designated spot for aftercare. Kids who are in aftercare, they go to this spot, then their aftercare adults come pick them up. They say goodbye to us on the way out, so we know that they're leaving. So have we thought about all those logistical parts of, this is what now busing students from Lupine Hills to Stewart looks like?
So the plan is that we're going to meet with the site administrators from each of these schools, so that we can have that conversation. But the expectation is that all the hosting after-school programs will know when these students are arriving, and they will be there at a designated spot to receive students and then safely walk them to the appropriate after-school classroom.
Thank you very much. Board, with all of our questions being answered, can I get a motion to approve the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program? Program Plan, ELOP. Clark Gonzalez-Loy? You're motioning.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan.
Thank you so very much. Is there a second?
Well, second it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any? I'm sorry, Hennessy, did I ask for public comment already? We don't have no, we have zero public comment. Thank you. Board, anyone need a discussion? Would like to have any discussion? Trustee Reckler?
Clark Smithville, sorry, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Trustee Reckler. Um, it is 9:54, so we have to extend the meeting. We obviously have to finish this item, and we have our discussion item. And I would appreciate if we could have one-minute comments from the board. So I'll move that we extend the meeting until 11:00. Hopefully, we don't need, we won't need that long.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Loy. I will second that motion. We just vote on that one? Okay, good. Let's go ahead and vote. We're gonna vote to extend to 11 o'clock with the full intention of not staying that long. Trustee, Student Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips? He said yes. Trustee Reckler? Thank you.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee? Clark Gonzalez-Loy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you, Board. Let me roll back to where we were. We are now at comments. Trustee Reckler, you had a comment, and I would, I would agree with Clark Gonzalez-Loy. If we could keep it to one minute, we will make sure that we're out of here timely. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I wanted to tell you that my, my daughter is employed in one of the after-school programs. Not now, but last year. in one of the after-school programs, not now, but last year she was employed and had very good things to say about the programs. And she worked at a number of different schools. And she said that the programming was actually really good and quote-unquote way better than when I had after-school programming. So really, thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Second, everybody's been talking about this bus, and I'm gonna talk about the bus too because there aren't any bus drivers out there. And I've gotten the email box full of complaints from special ed parents about pickup. So I'm going to encourage that that is really dialed in. And I wonder if you are allowed, because it's after-school, to use one of these new I don't exactly know what to call them, appy things, or, you know, not like for a student. But, you know, I just caution to um really take a good look at that transportation. Um, you know, the transportation piece, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, trustee Ruckler. Any other comments? I do have a comment, and it goes right with transportation. I would like us to make sure that we're including um Mr. Booker in this conversation, because safety will be needs to be on the table when we're talking about transportation and including our buses. How do we handle conflict? When do we pull over? What do we do? So that training has to be there. I uh encourage you, when you go to the schools and you talk to the site administrators, talk to the people who actually do after-school pickup. They may, those may be your volunteers, it may be some teachers, it may be, they need to be at the table of those conversations because they can help you logistically at each site. This is what it looks like at our site, this is what we need, these are the resources that we have to have. Safety is paramount when we're doing this, especially when it gets dark so quick now, right? There are lots of little things that we have to make sure that we're looking at logistically when we're starting these programs. Um, I believe that I am complete. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was great.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, board, thank you so very much. We took a vote, it all, it passed. We had our we had our discuss, we didn't take a vote. Nope, look at that. All right, we need to take a vote on accepting the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, E L O P Program Plan. We are gonna start with student trustee Cypress cert.
Cypress cert, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you. Trust, trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. It passes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to agenda item F, discussion item. Our one and only discussion item is budget reduction list for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Ms. Moses, this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, President Smith Folds and Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, board and superintendent Hearst. I'm bringing forward tonight the full list of initial recommended reductions in order to satisfy our fiscal solvency plan and um our need to submit this plan to the county office by Friday. This plan has already been shared with labor. Last week, I brought forth the plan for non-salary reductions, and tonight we're bringing forth a full preliminary list of recommended reductions. Um, the list is attached to tonight's board agenda. The cuts total nineteen point eight nine million dollars. The cut target for the county reduction list is nineteen point seven million dollars. Included in the list that uh we've provided tonight is uh non-salary reductions in the amount of four point nine million. Salary reductions in the amount of fourteen point nine million for a total of uh recommended reduction in force of one hundred thirty-eight point seven two F T E. Of those positions, forty-five, approximately forty-five F T E are vacant positions. And approximately ninety-three positions are uh recommended for reduction. And I will stop there.
Thank you so very much, C B O Moses. Board, we're gonna go to questions. Let's start with three on the first round. And if we need to extend, we are able to. Anyone have questions?
Clerk Smithville, sorry, uh, we, we need to take public comment.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Are there any public comment?
We have one public comment. Mark Schalls, please unmute yourself.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, um, first, the document that has the fiscal solvency planning uh for the proposed F T E reductions, um, can we get another column in there which shows how much each row contributes to the fifteen million dollars? And second, um, we were told in a slide that multiple scenarios, the scenarios we presented to the board next week for consideration to satisfy the first step towards fiscal solvency. I know trustee Ruckler already addressed this, but I hope we get multiple scenarios presented at the uh first January meeting. Um, if you look at the Transparent California website, it contains twenty twenty-two salary information with W C C U S D employees. If you sort on regular pay or total pay and benefits, which you'll see is added at the top one hundred highest-paid persons in the district, three have the title teacher regular education, and they come in at position fifty, seventy-five, and seventy-eight. I think the current um proposal takes too much from the bottom and not enough from the top. So um students are affected most by the teachers, so do not cut from that, those ranks um as much as you are currently proposing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comment?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, we're gonna go to questions. Do we have any questions from the board? We'll start with three, and if we need to go a different round, we will. Any questions? Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So first, it's the list of the non-salary reductions that I'd like to address. And so I'd like to know, now that, you know, some targets have been identified, what is the process to really dig in and to eliminate those things? In, in other words, like, how are you gonna knock down the legal contracts as much as is in there? What's the plan? You know, like, how Gateway and um some of the other program eliminations? Like, what, what's the strategy to really make that reduction, those reductions reality?
Thank you for the question. Um, there are a few things that need to happen. First, we need to examine all of the contracts to ensure that they're expiring at, in June. Uh, notify the vendors that we will not be continuing with the contract as stated. Um, if it is a a contract that uh pays for a service, for example, we have several reductions. We're going to be talking to departments. For example, I'll take legal fees. Departments are gonna have their legal fee budget reduced, so we'll talk to them about plans on how to ensure that they are um using less of that service. And one of the things, for example, I just spoke with um I don't know if it was uh our chief negotiator creating a log of when he contacts legal, what the questions are and what the answers were, so that we can decrease the number of repetitive times we need to contact legal for um common questions that may come up. So we're trying to think outside of the box in terms of ensuring that we can meet our needs without these additional supports. And the other piece is, for example, reduction of software licenses. Um, Mary Kitchen in our contracts department has created a list of all of the licenses that we currently purchase in the district. She's shared that list with our chief technology officer, uh Tracy Logan, who's reviewing that list to uh check for duplications, and will also speak with site departments about where we can cut. Um, so I guess the, the short answer is, we're working with departments and department leads as well as our vendors to ensure that these expenses don't reappear in next year's budget. Also, when we build next year's budget, these amounts will be subtracted from, for example, the contracts budget. It'll be decreased to account for the contracts that we've decreased.
Thank you. Next, specifically, programs that are really gonna touch students. So virtual teachers, edgenuity, and the elimination of Gateway are deeply concerning to me and probably everybody else in this room. Considering that we don't have teachers, what is the plan? Especially around virtual, the virtual teachers and the edgenuity programs?
Uh, so first, talk about edgenuity. Um, from Imagine Learning, we, we contract in two ways. One is edgenuity, and that's for credit recovery. And there's another contract with Imagine Learning to provide virtual teachers for positions in which we've had a difficult time recruiting staff to meet the A three G requirement. Um, I've worked with Gabe Chilcutt for the virtual teachers and also with Jose De Leon on the edgenuity plan. We're trying to streamline edgenuity so that we don't have so many F T E at our high schools, so that we're meeting the needs of our students for credit recovery in a way in which they can be efficient in obtaining those credits and then exiting, exiting that class, rather than enrolling students in a full semester of edgenuity when they may really only have a few weeks of work to get done. So we're trying to be more efficient for our credit recovery program, and the planning for that and the conversations needed to have that we need to have in order to create that plan are happening right now under the direction of Jose De Leon. In addition to the uh virtual teachers, our contract is um, is, we're reducing it in hopes that um the number of virtual teachers we need uh will decrease. And there's some work being done right now based upon the hiring that has happened to determine how much we can reduce that contract. So we're very thoughtful in where we're making these reductions, and it has to do with our, how we're meeting current needs and what our plan is moving forward to continue to meet that need.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, flipping over to uh the, the positions. So So it, I mean, I, I guess I'm answering my own question. I, I mean, I guess it's your intent to come forward with a list that all union partners agree on?
That is certainly the hope, although that we all know will be difficult to attain. Because as clerk Gonzalez-Hoy pointed out earlier, the job as labor is to, the job of our labor units is to protect their jobs. I don't know that we'll get any of our labor unions to agree that it's a good idea to cut their jobs. However, what we will attempt to do is have the conversations about our cut targets. And um, for example, if there are jobs that they do not agree um with being on this reduction list, we'll ask them for some alternative scenarios on other ways we can achieve that cuts. And um hopefully, those will be within their units. We don't wanna put ourselves in a position where we have labor um asking us to cut from other units. So we're gonna try to be thoughtful. We've been thoughtful as a cabinet with some, some really deep thinking about um what are some other ways in which we can do that. But prior to providing our thoughts, we want to solicit the thoughts of labor, and hopefully those two will match. And we'll be closer to a solution that they can live with, and one that serves our district well and retains our programs and um cap, recaptures the quality of what we, we aim to do for our students.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I have some comments at the end.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, uh President Smith Folds. Um, Ms. Moses, thank you again. Um, so could you just explain one more time? Where, where are the next steps that you're gonna take with labor? Um, so that there's a we see the final list in January twenty-fourth?
Yeah, so I wanna uh stop to thank our labor partners for um for, first of all, showing up and having these conversations with us, since their level of concern is impressive and also respected. Um, I've received a list of questions from the labor unions combined. Uh, our business services team is in the process of answering all of those questions to provide those back to labor so that they can have the information that they need to consider um when we sit down and have our conversations at the table. We solidified a date today for that meeting. Um, I was speaking with one of our labor partners. I will be sending out the calendar invite. But all of the leaders of the labor organization have been um informed of that date. And I'm, I'm assuming I can share it here. That date is gonna be Ju, January ninth. And we're gonna meet on that day. Um, they will have the answers to their questions prior to that meeting. And we'll sit down and have thoughtful conversations about their ideas and our ideas, and, and together we will um try and figure this out. Um, at that point, I expect to have follow-up meetings. I don't expect there to be just one meeting. But I think we all need to um have their questions answered, have this initial meeting, and then plan next steps together. And hopes to have something to bring to you um to the board for consideration on January twenty-fourth in collaboration with the cabinet, superintendent Hearst, and labor.
Thank you, Ms. Moses. My last question is from Ms. Cleveland. Um, Ms. Cleveland, so the expectation for January twenty-fourth is practically that we're going to be voting for and finalizing the list that day and taking a just the official vote in March, but that the January twenty-fourth is our intentional vote to approve the cuts for March. Is that correct? That's, that's the county's request.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I made you get up just for that. Uh, thank you. That's it, President Smith Folds.
Thank you so much, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Any other questions? Uh, C B O Moses, I do have a question. Would it be prudent if we had a list of the, the job duty, the job duties, if it gets cut, who's gonna take over that role now, right? How does that work get distributed now? And then what? I don't know what a third column would be, but like, kinda having that kinda laid out, because it's kinda running the ball all the way down to the finish line? Would that be something that you would be able to, to, you have a lot to do? But is that something that would be necessary right now, or does that come at a later time? Does that come in the middle of having these discussions with labor? If we're cutting this, and this is what this person does, then we still have to get that part of that job done, so now this person is gonna do it?
Well, there's a lot of moving pieces there.
Okay.
Um, because duties are, duties uh performed by a staff member are dictated by their job description.
Okay.
And so it isn't a case where we can just say, okay, we're missing this person, so we're gonna shift their job to somebody else. I wish it were that simple. I can tell you that at the cabinet level, Dr. Hearst and the cabinet members have been having discussions about these positions that are proposed to be reduced and how we ensure that the work is covered. Um, and we're coming up with creative decisions. But I don't know that at this point, what we can do is actually give you a itemized account of what's gonna happen with the work. But I, I think the best that I can do tonight, and um Dr. Hearst can add to it if there is more, is that uh we're really being intentional about how we discuss these reductions and their impact to our system, to our students, to our schools. And we're at the, we're using all of our brain power and our passion to ensure that this is done in a thoughtful way, and it's not just a list of titles. That it's um something that we've thought long and hard about. And um, I'll, I'll start with how I started the budget subcommittee. We, we really need everybody. It's gonna be a hard, difficult hit to, to have to do this. But unfortunately, it has to be done, and we'll have to figure it out together.
Thank you so much for that answer. So it's something that may not be written down, but it's cer- certainly something that you're talking about and thinking about when you're having these conversations at cabinet level, and that will continue to happen when you're having the conversations with labor. Thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. Okay, board, we are now, that is our discussion item. We have finished discussing that item.
Clerk Smithville, I'm sorry, we have to do comments.
Oh, because see, I made my comment and my question. See, I got confused. All right, comments, board, comments. Let's do one minute apiece. Trustee Ruckler, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Schultz called in tonight with an excellent idea, and he made some really astute comments tonight. And that is, is that the F T E suggested reductions, there do need to be some additional columns on this. It needs to be filled versus unfilled positions, because what you have in here are unfilled posi- positions that you're cutting that are big dollar, but they're unfilled. So they're gonna be much less painful than positions that are filled. Okay? I mean, I guess I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But, you know, if the position isn't filled and it disappeared, it's way different than if somebody is sitting in that seat. So that, he is absolutely right. That distinction does need to be, be made. So that, he is absolutely right. That distinction does need to be, be made. And he made a comment about, you know, it's, it's top-heavy and, you know, he's not exactly wrong. He's not, you know, he's, he's going in the right direction. So that information does need to come out and I'm sure our labor partners are gonna ask for that. Have fun with that.
Thank you very much. Uh, trustee Phillips?
So I encourage the staff, and I've been talking about this for a while, to look at hiring general counsel for the district. Now, I know we're talking about cuts and I just said something about hiring somebody. But the reason that I'm saying that is this. This district has a long history of being sued every which way from Sunday. That's not going to stop. And cutting off access to counsel, I think is only going to make it worse. So the question is, how do we continue to get the legal advice we need and do it in a way that saves money? I think that's hiring general counsel. And then when we do have outside counsel, we have somebody who has the ability to manage them and their billing to make sure they're billing properly, which is what we don't have now and which is what cities do when they have to hire outside counsel. So thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Phillips. Anyone else? Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Smithfolds. Uh, thank you, Ms. Moses and your staff for tonight's presentations. You know, we have a month without counting winter break. It's one month challenge to get this done, right? It's a little scary that it's only a month, but that's, that's the reality that's in front of us. I wanna thank ahead of time our labor partners for pushing us. I know that they will. I know that they will about the list. I know that they will about alternatives, right? And I think that it's welcome. And I think that we also have to be very clear with community that we have to come up with a decision, right? So I think that as the time gets here, the question is not about whether it's happening or not, right? The question might be about what alternatives do we have, right? But not about whether or not the board has to make this decision. The decision has to be made. So we just have to be clear on that, but the path can shift a bit, but we have to do something. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. I think that all three of you have said basically what I would have said, so thank you so much. Let's now move to, gee, comments from the Board of Education. Let's do three minutes apiece because this is the last one before our winter break. And this is the last meeting of twenty-twenty-three. So let's do three minutes apiece. We will start off with trustee Phillips. We will start off with trustee Phillips and then we'll just kinda go in the room. Trustee Phillips, you're up.
Thank you. And I want to start by saying thank you to past president Gonzalez Hoi for his service to the board. Past president Gonzalez Hoi, we don't always see eye to eye, but I, I want to let you know that I respect you. And I hope that I showed that during your presidency. I know that being board president is difficult. So I tried very much so to treat you the way that I wanted to be treated. If you look back over the last year, you know, I did not, I didn't obstruct your meetings. You know, I didn't, when you asked for a certain amount of time, you know, I didn't go over the time. You know, I didn't just keep asking questions. Even though we did not always see eye to eye, I tried to respect you and I think I did when you were chairing the meetings. Because one, I know that it's hard to be board president, particularly if there are difficult subjects that have to be tackled. But also because I was taught to treat others the way that I wanna be treated. So I just wanna say to you, you know, congratulations on finishing your year. Congratulations on being able to manage the board. And I just hope that you recognize that when you are chairing the meetings, that I did not disrespect your leadership. I also want to say congratulations to president trustee Smithfolds on being elected to the presidency. I want to say congratulations on your first meeting as board president. You did a good job. And I wanna say to you something very similar to what I just said to past president Gonzalez Hoi. You don't have to worry about me obstructing your meetings. You don't have to worry about me ignoring you. You don't have to worry about me doing any of those things. Because I respect you as well. Again, like trustee, our past president Gonzalez Hoi, we don't always see eye to eye, but I respect you and I respect the position that you are in. And I know that it's a difficult one and that difficult things are coming up. So you don't have to worry about me because I know what you're about to go through. And again, I'm gonna treat you the way that I wanted to be treated. So good luck to you and I will support you.
Thank you very much. Any, trustee Reckler, do you have comments?
I do. So I'd like to thank the previous leadership team for your guidance and your leaderships. And I wish the new leadership team, in Hebrew, we say bahatslaka. And it doesn't mean good luck. It means go forward with success. So it's a different, you know, it's got a little bit more, even though I, good luck, good luck too, but it means really to go forward with success and to be successful. I also want to thank everybody for their hard work this year. I want to wish you all very happy holidays. I hope nobody does anything. Don't do anything. Don't do anything. Stop working. Don't do anything. And enjoy yourselves and take time to be with your families and to rest and to come back in twenty-twenty-four refreshed and ready for a new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Reckler. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Smithfolds. I would like to start by congratulating you as well on being elected president. You did a wonderful job in your first meeting. I know it's only gonna get even better. And you're gonna improve on the things that past presidents, including myself, have put in place. So I'm really looking forward to your leadership. I know that we have a lot of very difficult decisions to make while you are president. But like trustee Phillips said, I will support you with however I can. And I think that you're gonna do really great work. I guess you are what I, I consider one of the most courageous people I know. And incredibly ethically, incredible ethic leader. So thank you for stepping up. And I wanna thank the board for electing me clerk and for all your kudos as president. Definitely wasn't really looking forward to potentially being clerk. So I, that's why I had the face that I had when you all voted, because I was looking for a break. But I appreciate you all doing that. And I wanted to also thank our student trustees for tonight's presentation that they did. They did an excellent job. And even though they have one more meeting, I just think you're both incredible leaders. So I know we're gonna recognize you at the next meeting. And lastly, I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays. I agree with trustee Reckler. I hope that cabinet, I'm looking at all of you. I hope that you don't work. Ms. Moses, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause and say, you can at least take a couple of days. But, but serious, in all seriousness, I am taking some time off to be with family and I hope that all of you do as well. And I hope that everybody who's listening and our sites do. Because I know many teachers who stay and classified members who stay and work and take down their class or set it up or everybody deserves that break, especially as we head into a very difficult spring. Dr. Hurst, I also wanna thank you for your leadership. And we gotta just move forward together as a team. Thank you so much, President Smithfolds.
Thank you so very much. Student trustees? Um, let's go with trustee Cypressert first. Do you have any comments?
Yes, I have a few comments today. I would like to start off by saying thank you to everyone who presented today and all the contributions that were made. Again, we are really grateful for this opportunity received to give our presentation tonight. Our project was crafted with the care and devotion that we show to our community and the platform and voice you have all shown us is something I truly appreciate. And being involved in my community, knowing what's going on and creating impactful change or goals I aim to achieve and through this role and opportunity, I feel very content. I hope everyone has an amazing break, an amazing holiday season. Please be safe and I'm looking forward to seeing all of you next year.
Trustee Calle?
Yeah, so I'd like to say thank you for all that was presented today. And it's appreciated to have the opportunity of what Anaya and I created and presented today. I wanted to elaborate more on the question that Clerk Gonzalez Hoi asked, which was, what's next? Our reply is, what can we expect to happen with the information that we brought to you all today? In the governance handbook draft, responsibility that we hold is to be a voice to the board regarding student issues, questions, concerns, and successes. The voices were said. Now we wanna see what initiatives will take place with the information that was brought. As said previously, our report was created for the best interest of student, teachers and students. And once again, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to serve as that voice and to understand the experiences that teachers went through during our entire process of creating this report. And I'm hopeful that it will result in changes being made as soon as possible. At the end with happy holidays, me and I brought pastries for you guys and I'm complete.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Hurst, you have anything? I like it. Good. Whoopsie. Thank you so very much for allowing me to serve as your president for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four year. I really appreciate it. It's something that I don't take for granted, but I do wanna make one thing very, very clear. I am not a superwoman. I am a human being. I cannot do anything beyond what I can do. So please do not put a cape on me. Please do not hold me up to some incredibly high pedestal. Keep that same smoke we have with everybody else. I am fallible. I make mistakes. I thank you for being my clerk and helping me through that because it's really important to me. But I just wanna make that clear because as a black woman, and we have many black women at cabinet, we are not superheroes. We are fabulous. We are wonderful. We are just touched by God, but we are not superheroes. So please understand that we have to do this together. This is not gonna be on the shoulders or the back of just a couple of people. We go and we go together. The other thing I wanna say is Friday, your sweet precious babies get out of school. Please remember gift cards over mugs. Teachers don't want them. They don't need them. Administrators don't want them. They don't need them. Gift cards over mugs. Make sure that you also take time to re-energize, because it is gonna be a very hard twenty-twenty-four. But it's not impossible. Hard does not mean impossible. Hard just means hard. To all of our labor partners out there, we will do this together. We have no other choice. It's something that we are setting as a president, as a board. We do everything in transparency. We do everything in clarity and we do everything together. CBO Moses, thank you, thank you, thank you for your clear ability to navigate and to have a conversation. Dr. Hurst, again, January is budget. All about budget in many different ways and many different fashions. Please take in all of that information from our community needs to our labor partners, to what the staff needs to say and bring it back to us. Constantly bring back things to us, to the board. The final thing is, I wanna make sure that we hear our student trustees and we come back with recommendations. Come back after cabinet has had time to digest those surveys, answers. And we come back and we make sure that we share that out to labor because it's also a labor issue. This is what your community is saying. This is what they're saying that they need. And we need to all bring that back to have lots of conversations. One thing I can guarantee you is I will try my hardest. I will absolutely try my hardest and I'm open to grow in all forms. Please let me know if there's something that I am doing. Ms. Johnson, not you, because you're gonna call me all the time. I'm gonna do something that is HR nightmare all the time, so you don't call me. But anybody else, please call me and help me grow in that because I am wanting to be the best version of myself. Board, after we adjourn, if you can stay just for two minutes, because we're gonna do self-evaluation. And I don't know, can we do that? Do we have to have that? Yeah, we're just gonna have a two-minute self-evaluation. How did we do tonight? What do we need to change? Points of growth. We can't do that, can we? It's not agenda. It's hot mess. We'll do it in January. That seems like a January issue. Don't worry about it. That's why you're here, Fran. So we will make that a January issue because we do wanna have time after a board meeting just to reflect on how well we did, what we need to do different or do different and our points of growth. We gonna be our best sales in twenty-twenty-four. That's it, complete. Let's say our next board meeting is, the next scheduled regular board meeting is on January the tenth, twenty-twenty-four. I caught a mistake in the agenda, Rosa. It says January tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Ooh, I know. So our next scheduled regular board meeting is on January twen- tenth, January tenth, twenty-twenty-four at Levania Deshawn Middle School. Thank you. Oh, can I bang this gavel?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Have a very happy holiday. We will see you in January twenty-twenty-four. Oh, oh, we are dismissed at ten thirty-one. Get to do it again.